We open this meeting at 6:34. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Secretary Petronella will not be participating tonight, so Second Vice Chair Linda DeGray will assume the role of Secretary. She please call the role.
Lou Fiore.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here. Virginia Higley.
Here.
John Petronella is absent. Nick Lefakis.
Here.
Frank Alimo.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Ken Holinsky.
Here.
Karim Majnub.
Majnubdar.
Thank you.
He's welcome. He's absent tonight.
He's absent, and Christian D. Antonio.
Here.
Thank you. Take a motion to accept the minutes of April 14th.
So moved.
Is there any -- is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Commissioner Holinsky, to accept the minutes from April 14th. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Any changes to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor of the minutes? The record show that five, excuse me, six are four and two abstain. Commissioner D. Antonio and Grillo abstain because they did not participate in that meeting. Is there any public participation for Enfield Aquifer Protection? Seeing none. Is there any correspondence for Enfield Aquifer Protection? Any correspondence, Georgie, from your standpoint?
Not at the moment, but I do have two other applications for Aquifer Protection that we received. However, I just want to reflect that they are not yet complete, so I'm hoping before July they'll be on the July agenda. It's for two auto businesses similar near Stateline Auto for Marx Motorsports and Minnaki Car Care Center.
Okay, thank you. And the Minnaki, that's the one on freshwater, correct over by Cranbrook.
Minnaki is 66 Enfield, up the street.
The other one, the other Minnaki.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Seeing that, I believe this is the application for ARA 22-88 Enfield Street?
Yes, that's me.
Aquifer registration application over the A-43 Aquifer for Stateline Auto. Seth Klaas, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yeah, Seth Klase.
Klase, I'm sorry. Applicant Robert Sylvia Nugent, family owner, map 35 lot 43 BG Zone. If the applicant is here, please sit down and, excuse me, identify yourself for the record. Just make sure the mic is on, the red button, and pull that close to you, please.
Looks good. This is Seth Klase. How are you?
Good, how are you?
All right.
And you're here representing 88 Enfield Street?
I am.
Thank you. And maybe you can kind of lead us along, Georgie, please?
Good evening. So just some background. I'm just going to read my staff report into the record because it contains all the information, hopefully answers any questions you may have. And we haven't had an APA meeting in a while, so this might be a little refresher for you. So as we know, site is home to Stateline Auto and Trucking Business located over the A-43 Aquifer. The site is eligible for registration again because the site had an original renewal of APA from the Nogger family in May of 2010. Similar to other applicants, Nogger family was never notified about their registration and their expiration. So that grants them a forgiveness period, and then add on top of that the forgiveness period we have right now from the state, so that grants him eligibility to continue to register. The Nogger family originally had the site registered under multiple activities, A, B, C, D, E, G, V, and X, all about hazardous materials, de-icing materials, car and truck washing. So now the applicant comes before us today with much, much difference in activities. So he only has D, which is repair or maintenance of vehicles or internal combustion engines of vehicles. Additional information in relation to this activity includes the use, storage, and disposal of hazardous materials, including solvents, lubricants, paints, brake fluids, transmission fluids, or the generation of any hazardous waste. So we did a site inspection at Stateline Auto on May 13th, where staff met outside with the applicant. It was observed that the materials stored inside here are organized, no violations were detected, and no chemicals or waste barrels were located in any unauthorized areas of the site. The facility also contained zero floor drains. There were no floor stains from any chemicals that were seen on the floor of the facility. Dumpsters were found to be in compliance, no holes or rusting, as well as have proper protection to prevent water access into the waste. This site was also found to be cared for by the owner in regards to facility hygiene and organization. Based off this inspection, the nature of Stateline Auto, the activity conducted at this site does meet the definition of Activity B as described above according to regulations and the RCSA regulations. So the applicant submitted their best management plan and their materials management plan, which satisfy the required regulations of Section 12 of the Enfield APA regulations. And it should also be noted that vehicle waste oil isn't considered a hazardous material under the hazardous waste regulations unless it is mixed with hazardous material. The waste oil is burned on this site with the proper waste oil burner generator, and it freezes and considered hazardous until it's been used. This applicant has 25 gallons, one barrel of hazardous waste antifreeze on site. Safety Clean is their third-party company and is hired by the applicant to come properly dispose of any waste material on site. Stormwater runoff on this site runs down towards the back of the property into the businesses behind it where Marx Motorsports and Minnaki is located. These drain into the near catch basins near Marx Motorsports, which eventually drain off into the wetlands behind it. The facility does not have any potential pollution violations that are exposed to any rainwater access that would potentially pollute the groundwater area. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, as Chairman, I exclude one step that we should have done earlier because we have the two members that are missing tonight. I do need to mention that alternate Commissioner Grillo and alternate Commissioner Lefakis, it's their turn to be the full-time members tonight for the Aquifer Protection Agency.
Thank you.
I apologize for not mentioning that earlier, everybody. Is there any questions for the applicant or staff on this? Seeing none, again, I'm just going to mention again, the staff assesses based on the inspection that they did, the nature of Stateline Auto, the activity conducted, the site does meet the definition of Activity D, described above according to RISA Section 22, so it looks like everything's in pretty good nature. I take it we need a motion to approve or accept?
I make a motion to approve ARA 22-88 Enfield Street Aquifer Registration Application over the A-43 Aquifer for Stateline Auto, Seth Klaas.
Klase, yeah.
Klase. Applicant Robert and Sylvia Nugent, family owner, map 35 lot 43 BG Zone.
Motion made by Commissioner DeGray. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the Secretary please call the role? Take your time.
I'm not used to this.
I know you're not. It's okay.
Lou Fiore.
Four.
Linda DeGray, four. Virginia Higley.
Four.
Nick Lefakis.
Four.
Frank Alimo.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Ken Holinsky.
Four.
The record shows the past seven, nothing. I think we're all set. Accepted. You're all set. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for working with staff on getting this completed. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And thank you, staff.
Yep, we'll be in touch.
Is there any other business in the Aquifer Protection?
No.
Seeing none, we hopefully will get those so we're not, because we're not going to do them in August, right? No, okay, thank you. Take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner DeGray. Adjourn. All those in favor? Seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
The record show unanimous we'll adjourn. The next step will be the Planning Zone Meeting. That will start at 7:00 PM.
Time is 6:41.
Time is 6:41. Call this meeting to order the Enfield Planning Zone Commission Thursday night, June 30th at 7:02. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everyone. Fire evacuation announcement. Fire evacuation is right behind you, the doors, right behind you. Also, out these doors and then down the stairs, out the back, and please, if there is an evacuation, please move away from the building as far away as possible. Thank you. Our Secretary, John Petronella, is not here. Thank you. Our Secretary, John Petronella, is not here tonight, so Vice Chairman DeGray will fill in as Secretary. Would you please call the role?
Lou Fiore.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella absent.
Frank Alamo.
Here.
Karim Maj Mudar absent.
Ken Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
And Nick LaFakas.
Here.
Thank you. I'll make the announcement because we have two regular members absent tonight. Commissioner Grillo and Commissioner LaFakas will be sitting in as regular full-time voting members tonight. We're Commissioner D'Antonio as the backup. Make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 9th regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Holinsky, seconded by Commissioner Pigly. Any discussion on the minutes?
No.
I did have two corrections, I believe, that do need to be made, only because I'm a stickler with the minutes from my past experiences and how we do go back to them for reference. And I'll take my time, Lori, so you can follow me. On page three, the old public hearings when we talk about PH 3036 to 33 Paloma Drive, I think it's important that my statement in there where I asked the applicant if he understood all the conditions before we approved it, and he certainly indicated that he did, but I think it's important that that statement be added into the minutes just for the record in the future, in case we have any problems going forward with that. And also on page six, down the bottom, a Director of Planning report. Towards the bottom, it says Ms. Witten stated that there will be a public meeting at the Senior Center on June 15th so everyone can see the new master plan. But I think it was so everyone could see the new proposal that we're seeing tonight, not the master plan. So I think this is a correction, master plan to Felicia Sisters' proposal. Is anyone having objections to those two changes amendments that I made? Their motion to accept the minutes with the amendments that I just made?
Please move.
Motion made by Commissioner Alamo.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeGray to accept the minutes with the changes that I just indicated. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seeing I? Make notion that all in favor. Commissioner D'Antonio did abstain because he was not at the last meeting. Town Attorney Report. Oh, excuse me. Wish someone would entertain a motion that we move item 12D, the former mall area traffic impact study by CROG, to be up in our agenda to, in the spot where we have bond releases.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner DeGray, to move item 12D, mall area traffic impact study by CROG, to be in the spot in our agenda where we have bond releases. All those in favor?
Aye.
Show that the record show is unanimous. We did receive our Town Attorney Report. I think hopefully we had a chance to see that. I'm sure we'll get some other updates coming up soon on that. Now, now we're to the part of the normal public presentation, participation, excuse me. At this point in the meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions related to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who was present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending, and that also includes any legal pending action. So is there anyone who'd like to come in front of the planning and zoning, talk about anything that's kind of not on the agenda tonight? Is there anyone who'd like to come in front of the planning and zoning, talk about anything not on the agenda tonight? For the last time, seeing none, public participation is closed. And now we move on to the item 12D, the former mall area traffic impact study by CROG. And I believe we have some representatives from CROG logging on remotely here as I speak, or attempting to.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. This is Caitlin Palmer from CROG. Trying to make sure my camera will turn on for you. There we go. Okay.
Excuse me, also John Chris Henchey, Trancher Nation, part of the Capital Region Council of Governments.
Thank you both for joining us. I guess you'll just proceed, and I'm going to let you guys drive with Lori on this. And we're just going to sit back for now on this. Listen, thank you.
Thank you so much for having us. And again, yes, my name is Caitlin Palmer. I'm a planner with the Capital Region Council of Government. We are, you know, sort of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the planning organization for the 38 communities in the Hartford region. And while we do many things at CROG, one of the things, at least on our side of the office, is we do transportation studies, corridor studies. And this particular project was brought to our attention, actually, back in 2017. So I'll touch on that, and just want to thank you all so much for having us, and Chris already introduced himself. And he'll be advancing my slides for me. So thank you so much, Chris. You can go ahead and, we can move to the next one. Just real quick, this is kind of what we're going to be talking about today. There's a lot of information. We've been busy, kind of the last year, doing some data gathering. So I will try to go over it, but be respectful of your time. I know you've got a really full agenda. So just, you know, this is basically what we're going to be talking about. Give you a super brief project background. We're going to, you know, throw the study area overview map up for you, and then talk about the data gathering that we've been doing, which is largely the existing conditions work. We did a market analysis study, and then the visual preference survey that many Enfield residents participated in, and then we'll also talk about next steps. So like I said, the CROG is working with our consultant. CDM Smith is the consultant that was selected for this project to conduct a traffic impact study centered around the Enfield Square Mall site and also the surrounding roadways. So basically, if the mall were to be redeveloped in the future, what would the impacts on the traffic be? As I said, this was originally identified back in 2017, I believe. And then we were able to release the RFQ in 2019, and then we did some scope modifications to get the project's scope and the budget in alignment, and then we were able to sign the contract just last year in 2021. And so we've been, we've been busy since. So as you all are probably familiar, this is the study area. Kind of highlighted there in the middle is the mall itself, obviously. And then you've got the surrounding roadways that are the focus for this study as well, for assessing impacts. You've got Route 220, 190, or Elm and Hazard, and we also have Freshwater, Cranbrook, and Paloma as well. Specifically also identified as part of this study, I apologize, trying to make sure all the notifications are off, were the 15 specific intersections that we're going to also be focusing on. All right, Chrissy. As I said, this last year, essentially, we've been focusing on the data gathering portion. So again, looking at existing conditions, we've been doing site visits. The consultant, as well as Chris and myself, have gone out. We've done the market analysis, and then we've also done the visual preference survey. So we're going to kind of try to cover fairly high levels still. There's obviously a lot of information that's wrapped up into things like the market study and the, and the survey results, but try to touch on for you tonight some key information that we've gathered out of those processes, and at the end, touch on how we're going to use that all to inform our next steps. And just a little context for you, there's just a picture that was taken on Freshwater Boulevard. Right after a sidewalk ends, you can see a little footpath through the grass. I think I'll talk about that on the next slide as well, a little bit. So, Chris.
Okay, so what we have here is sort of, these are some images that we've taken on our site visits. So again, the consultant did one in 2021, and then Chris and myself, we went actually just this last month. And this, the pictures, at least on this slide, are focused on sort of the pedestrian observations that we saw. That first photograph, there's a lot going on, but basically what we're trying to show you is there's a lack of marked crosswalks at some very busy intersections. You also have some non-ADA compliant ramps where, you know, when your sidewalk ends and your roadway begins, you should have tactile warning strips. In a lot of locations, those are missing. The narrow sidewalk that goes under the I-91 bridge there is pretty narrow. Not sure about, you know, accessibility accommodations right now. And then also flagging sort of inconsistent or incorrect sidewalk continuation across driveways. I think this particular example is on 220 at the Mobil Gas Station, where I believe your sidewalk should be kind of going across there. And the continuation or not of a sidewalk across driveways versus roadways is sort of an indication of who's supposed to have priority at that location. So something that we just wanted to flag for you, and we saw that on our site visit. Additionally, what's sort of not shown here is push buttons at some of the intersections exist. They're not consistently at all corners of intersection, but no pet heads. So you might be able to push a button, but then there's no pedestrian signal for you letting you know when to go. In particular, when we were on our site visit ourselves, we, after we struggled through one intersection, we did witness an older pedestrian who had clearly pressed a button, trying to cross 220. But when we sort of like looked back to sort of see if he had made it across, he was in the process of running across because he pressed a button, but there was no indication of when he was supposed to go. And then, as I said, the non-continuous sidewalks. Additionally, not shown as pictures here, but there are also observations regarding vehicular observations, sort of the quantity of left turn demands, particularly 220 and the Coles Plaza intersection, which we witnessed as well, resulting, I think, some unsafe decisions by motor vehicleists about trying to take gaps that are maybe a little too small, or trying to squeeze in before the light turns red, or in some cases, as we witnessed, after the light turns red, just because they didn't want to wait through the signal again. The consultant and ourselves, on separate site visits, witnessed some near-miss crashes on 220. I think our consultant noticed it at Freshwater Boulevard. We saw something similar, I think, at 220 and Target. Additional observations for vehicles is the turn lanes, the demand, I think, to turn is exceeding the storage that is, that is there for vehicles. And then, simple things like there's some missing pavement markings for, you know, turn lanes and arrows that help indicate what that lane is supposed to be doing. And then additionally, just a couple of other observations. Again, I don't have any images for this, but the consultant noted that potentially the pedestrian timings might not match the signal plans. So that's something that I think they'll be looking into greater detail when we dive into the traffic impact study, and that might be a way to remedy some of the confusion or the potential conflicts. And then additionally, something that we all noticed when we did our site visits is that there is more pedestrian activity on 220 than there is on 190. And I think that's just something to keep in mind as we go through this presentation and as we proceed into our next steps as far as the town of Enfield, thinking about what you all might like to see for future traffic mitigation measures, but also just generally what you see for 220 versus 190. Are they the same? Are they going to be treated differently because of potential access that you could create on 220 over to Thompsonville? And various things like that. So I think finally, Chris, after all that, you can move this slide along. So now we're into crash history. So the consultant looked at four years of data, so from 2017 to 2020. Again, we initially did this work in 2021, so that's why the data is only to 2020. And in that four-year timeframe, we're looking at a total of 471 crashes. I apologize that pie chart's probably a little small, but basically the breakdown is most predominant type of crashes were 45% of rear-end crashes, probably not super uncommon on a roadway like this where you've got stoplights, lots of curb cuts for people slowing down to enter businesses. So that was the majority, or, you know, the biggest contributor to your crashes along this site area. 35% were angle crashes, and then I went ahead and included 12%, approximately 12% were sideswipe in the same direction. So you can think of those crashes as like changing lanes into somebody, or both going in the same direction, and you change lanes into somebody. Also of note in the crash history is that there were six cyclist, as well as two pedestrian crashes, or crashes that involved cyclists and pedestrians. And I do believe, on the next slide, which we're not there yet, but I think they're all on 220, all of those crashes that happen involving those users. And then also of note, a lot of the crashes are minor injury or property damage only, but you did have one fatality in 2017. That was the fatality that happened at St. Thomas Street on 220. And then you also had three serious injuries. You can move on to this one, Chris. All right, next we have crash history, and this is probably a difficult map to read, sort of at a distance. But basically, our consultant mapped all of those 471 crashes onto a map, so each dot that you see represents a collision. And again, I have another map coming up that is also incredibly useful, but what's nice about this one is you can see that pattern that I was talking about regarding your pedestrians and your bicycles. Again, that is all happening, and I'm confirming for myself yet again, that's all happening on 220, not on 190. You've got the, if you can read that, red is the fatal, so again, you see that at St. Thomas. The serious injuries are orange, your pedestrians are yellow, and your bike crashes are blue. So if you're able to see those colored dots, you can see that, that pattern emerging. All right, next slide for me, Chris. All right, next we have, as far as crash history, so it's taking that sort of cumulative number of crashes and grouping them together at intersections. And so the color of the dot that you're seeing represents sort of the quantity of crashes that you're seeing. What's probably impossible for you to see is also beside that dot is a number, and that represents the crash rate. So that's kind of giving you a better understanding, sort of, how many crashes are occurring, I think, relative to the amount of traffic that intersection is actually seeing. So of note, I think it's Paloma and Cranbrook. There, it's just a, it's a small little green dot, so it's not that many crashes necessarily, but the rate is pretty high. It's over, it's like 1.1 or 1.14, which is actually a higher crash rate than your, a lot of your red dots that you see on the map. So it's just another useful data point to consider. Next slide for me. Next, we're moving into sort of operations analysis. So we look at weekday AM and evening peak hours, as well as Saturday, and we look to see how are your intersections and your roadways functioning? Of note, what you're going to see in the next slides are an existing, so 2021 level of service indication for your intersections now, and then you're also going to see what's called a future no build. And I will, I'll explain that more when we get to that slide. But for now, we can go to the next one. So again, this is your level of service indicated for each one of the 15 intersections that are part of the study area. And so keeping in mind for level of service, as you all are, many of you at least are probably familiar, it's a qualitative measure used to describe the quality of motor vehicle traffic service and analyzing your roadways and intersections by sort of categorizing traffic flow. And as you can imagine, you know, green is, is good. It's sort of like a report card. A is good, and it goes all the way to F for failing, basically. A to give you sort of an example is very good operation. It's less than a 10-second delay. So the flow of your traffic is moving very well, so your, your wait as a motor vehicle driver is, you know, nearly inconsequential. And then as you move through, A, B, and C are actually all pretty good. You're starting to experience more congestion and more wait times, obviously. And it does vary depending on whether it's a signalized or an unsignalized intersection. That's all keyed in detail on this map. And you're also seeing the AM peak, the evening peak for weekdays, and then that third box is your weekend. So again, it's a lot of data, and I think it'll be helpful, I'm going to ask Chris to sort of flip back and forth multiple times in just a moment. But before he does that, I just want to make a comment that I think it's important to also keep in mind as you look at these maps, that level of service is a very vehicle-focused metric. So it's a very useful metric, but keeping in mind that in some places, for certain contexts, depending on what you're trying to accomplish on the street, that vehicle delay isn't necessarily always a bad thing. But now I'll ask Chris to flip back and forth a few times. So this is existing, and now move to future. And then back to existing. Sorry, Chris, if I'm making that complicated. And then one more time to future. There's no easy way to sort of show you on the screen unless you're like kind of looking at them side by side, but that toggling kind of gives you an idea of what the existing conditions are here. And then one last time, we can stay on future now. And this is your future no build. So basically, And then one last time, we'll, we can stay on future now. And this is your future no build. So basically, um, this is showing you that um, based on pretty modest Connecticut projections, I believe, for population and employment growth, that if you don't do anything to mitigate traffic in this area, intersections that were previously doing okay are not going to be doing as well. And additionally, um, congestion and intersections that were, you know, already maybe doing poorly are in the, particularly in the evening and maybe the weekend peaks, it's going to start to also spill over into your morning peak period as well. So you're going to be seeing worse traffic and congestion at your intersections more frequently. Um, so a-again, I think this is just important to note because this is the future no build. So if nothing happens to the mall, if the mall doesn't get redeveloped at all, um, you still, as a town, should be considering um, what mitigation measures that you likely are going to need to take on on these roadways. Um, and then, you know, hopefully regardless of what happens, the information that comes out of our traffic study at the end of all of this will still give you very uh, helpful information on on how to do that. Um, so next slide, please. And last, as far as um, the the data gathering on the the transportation roadway side of things, just touching really quick on transit services. I won't spend really any too much time on this slide because you're probably all very familiar. But of course, we wanted to take a look and see what services that you have. Um, and um, of of note, um, you know, you've got your your CT Transit Express Bus. Um, you've got the PBTA, the fixed route with the connection to CT Transit, and you've got a couple of Magic Carpet Bus um, services as well. Um, not a lot of weekend services. I think the Magic Carpet provides some Saturday service. And then you have the, some of the on-call and demand ones offering like twenty-four seven uh, service, but I think that's it for that one. All right, so moving on from that, um, I'll probably just try to get through all the content and then make sure that um, that we have time for questions um, at the end. But um, next, we're going to dive into the market study. Um, this might be difficult to read. Um, so I'll go ahead and read it. This is a snippet from our executive summary of the market study, which is available on our website. You can read the whole thing. Um, but basically this says multifamily residential was identified as a primary opportunity along with other types of housing. Specific types of retail, including big box, restaurants, and retail integrated into mixed-use development were also found to have market potential despite the vacancy struggles of the mall property. Um, so we got some really great feedback and information from the market study that was conducted, identifying uh, separate market feasible uses for the potential redevelopment of the the mall property itself. Um, so how they do this, uh, that's fine, you can go to that one, yeah. Um, comprehensive data analysis um, is supplemented with additional research as well as um, what the consultant calls market intelligence interviews um, that they did with local real estate. Um, you know, if uh, experts, developers, the property owner themselves. Um, I think Metro Hartford Alliance was one of them. So folks knowledgeable about local market conditions uh, were were also interviewed. Um, as part of the market study, what they do is they identify the market area. So looking at commute patterns within the region, the market area forms a reasonable representation um, for, you know, who would partake in the market segments that were studied or evaluated, which are listed there on the left. So you've got your um, residential multifamily um, market analysis. Um, you've got your retail, commercial, industrial, and tourism. Um, for the residential, uh, the market study talks about, um, there's a demand for upscale uh, residential as well as workforce, affordable, and senior living. Um, and this is apartments and townhomes um, were identified or condos. Um, for the retail piece, um, I think, you know, the previous slide talks about sort of the big box stores as well as the mixed use and pedestrian-friendly, the smaller-scale retail, as well as some mid and upscale even uh, restaurants. Um, and then for the office, of no surprise there, there's not really a demand for office. This is kind of true, um, not just in Connecticut and, you know, before the pandemic and it hasn't gotten any better. Um, but they did identify some demand for medical office space. So um, that is, that is on the table. Um, for industrial, um, I will say that they did identify distribution and fulfillment centers and warehousing type uses as a viable use. Um, however, um, because of the the current zoning and the fact that you guys have um, additional areas or other areas already in Enfield zone for this, um, we kind of have set that aside for the moment. So if there's any other questions on that, now would be an excellent time to let me know and would inform sort of how we proceed. Um, and then last on the tourism and hospitality uh, analysis, um, that was, that that came in pretty strongly. You have a, I think it's a market, market potential index. I got that wrong. I talk about it a little, a little later on. Um, but it's pretty high in Enfield actually for this type of use. So that was definitely flagged. Um, additionally, in looking at all of these um, different uh, segments of um, of the market, they also looked at demographic and other economic data, and they also looked at other mall redevelopment trends that um, that they're seeing around the country, then they used as sort of key studies to help guide us um, as as we move forward. Next slide. Um, so the big question is, right, um, how much and of what can be supported? Um, so basically, they identified that a hundred and thirty-eight rental units per year for five years could be um, could be supported. This is a total of uh, six hundred and eighty units. Um, they also identified that about twenty to thirty townhomes, again, per year for five years, so three hundred units could potentially be supported. And that as well, um, you've got about a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of mixed-use retail with residential. And I think that's key that um, that number is contingent on residential units coming online to support that retail. Um, and in addition to that retail, additionally, maybe two restaurants, as I said earlier, I think some mid uh, upscale restaurants. And then again, on that medical office piece, about thirty-eight thousand square feet of medical office could be supported. Um, and then uh, yeah, I think that's it. I think I covered everything on that slide that I wanted to. Next slide, please. So next, um, and kind of least as far as the the data, the data dump for you all tonight, if you will, we've got our visual preference survey, um, which I just, I kind of want to thank everybody here. Um, because I'm sure a lot of you participated or maybe helped um, get the word out. Um, I don't know what I was expecting for a response rate, but um, you all did amazing. Um, we had over one thousand uh, responses. Eighty-four percent of um, the responses that we received were from Enfield, that put down an Enfield zip code. Um, we also got about ten percent from other Connecticut towns. Um, and about two percent from other Massachusetts towns. And I think that leaves us with a remainder about four percent from other areas of the country. But um, great to know that we have such a great response rate and that so many of them were from Enfield. So you've got a pretty good sense, maybe, um, I think of how your your community feels about the certain uh, the themes that we asked, which um, are listed below. Again, I'll read them because that's a little small, maybe. Um, but we basically asked questions about uh, seven themes related to building density, site layout and parking, building architecture, building heights, residential uses, entertainment uses, and then also bike pedestrian amenities. Um, and so basically, um, you know, you go through the survey, we tell you a little bit what we mean when we're saying, you know, talk to us about building density, what do you think? And we showed uh, various images and asked um, everybody who responded to please select based on, you know, a rating scale of very desirable, okay, or not desirable, how they felt about each of those images. So you can move on for me, Chris. Um, so again, I'm not going to touch on all the details of the visual preference survey. Um, there's a lot of data there. Um, I'm happy to, um, Lori has this information. Um, we probably could maybe work on putting it together um, a little bit more comprehensively than what you're going to see here, if you're curious, in a way that's a little bit more digestible than what Lori has. Um, so I'm going to try to hit some of the higher um, points of interest here. Um, one of the themes, as I mentioned, was building density. So we tried to define that for the survey takers to say, that's the relationship of the storefronts and the parking and the access to the store. So please focus on access when you're thinking about how desirable or not you feel these images are for Enfield. Um, and then down below, um, we we showed them pictures of a strip mall. We showed them two different versions of an outdoor commercial mall. We showed them standalone retail and then multiple standalone retail as well. Um, and so for example, the standalone retail, for example, would be the Best Buy image. Um, outdoor commercial mall, we showed them two, like I said, one was a um, sort of a more, I um, what is the word I want? Like a, like an outlets mall where it's pedestrian-only access to the stores really on that internal corridor. And then we also showed Evergreen Walk as another example where you have pedestrian and vehicular access. Um, and then those numbers on the right trying to show you a lot of information, um, a little bit concisely here. But basically, that first number, if you look at outdoor commercial mall, for example, sixty-five percent of respondents found that to be very desirable. Twenty-five percent found the outdoor commercial mall, Evergreen Walk example to be okay. So basically, you've got a total of, we're looking at ninety percent of people that I've called comfortable with some sort of idea around like an outdoor commercial mall to give you a sense of what folks might be interested in seeing should that mall property be redeveloped. Next slide. All right, so next, um, we had site layout and parking. So how do the buildings and the parking areas um, are oriented on the site? And we also have building heights. Um, I don't really have any sort of summary here for you for the site layout and parking. Of note, I will say, we showed an image of a parking garage. Um, and sixty-two percent of people that responded said that was not desirable. Um, I will say, we picked a nice parking garage. It was brick, but um, it was definitely a parking garage. Um, we didn't show an example of like a wrapped parking garage with, you know, retail wrapped with the parking garage sort of tucked in and hidden beside. I think because we weren't sure how we would really be able to convey that to people taking the survey. Um, but like I said, not a lot of people found it to be very desirable. Um, and even some of the written in comments flagged um, safety concerns relative to to parking garages. Um, and then we also had building heights. Again, this is pretty, pretty clear. This is the height of buildings. Um, we asked them, how do you feel about a one-story building, a three-story building, four to six, and seven to eight? Those were all different questions. Um, and we asked about the taller stories just because um, I believe that's what allowed, what is currently allowed through zoning, maybe through some density bonuses, um, or other bonuses of various kinds to get you to that. But your zoning currently allows for that on the site. And basically, the feedback we got on that was not super, not super desirable. Um, I was um, a little surprised actually by ninety-five percent. Um, this is a combined number right here, by the way, if the little key is trying to indicate to you that. Um, very desirable and okay. Ninety-five percent of people who responded um, felt that way about one-story buildings. Um, and then sixty-six percent of people, which is still pretty good. That's, you know, a solid majority of people still felt comfortable with three-story buildings. Um, and I think some of the issues or the concerns that folks had um, with the taller-story buildings and the written comments, um, which is again, what's kind of why it's helpful to have that, is um, concern for losing the small-town feel and also accessibility um, to units was was one of the concerns cited. Next slide, please. All right, so this one is um, summary of sort of your residential uses. Um, we uh, we also prefaced the survey by letting people know, because again, this is a visual preference survey for the mall area. People might be confused about us asking about residential uses potentially. So we did ask folks, or we, you know, we let folks know that the market study for this area indicates that residential uses could do well at this location. So we did provide them that little bit of information and then ask people to focus when thinking about residential use on um, how you as a tenant or homeowner, whatever the case may be, would access your building and how you would share space potentially. Um, so for example, that first townhome listed is the image that you see there at the top. This is an individual door that only you have access to your unit. You don't really share any space. Um, this scored very highly. Thirty-six percent of people found it to be very desirable. Forty percent said it was okay. So overall, again, pretty, pretty high um, comfort level there with townhomes um, that don't share space. Um, the next bullet there, this is townhomes with like a shared hallway or a shared courtyard, didn't score as well. Um, so unsurprisingly as well, um, the apartments where you typically have that sort of shared central doorway and you share hallways and your units are off of that, scored probably the lowest, I think it was, with um, twelve percent saying very desirable only. Um, and and of note, that would apply to whether it's a condo, so whether it's an ownership unit or a rental unit. Apartments didn't score quite as high. Um, and then last, um, mixed use is interesting. We showed that image that you see there on the bottom. Um, thirty-eight percent said very desirable, thirty percent said okay. And this is just interesting because this is the first time, I think, we had shown in the survey that vertical mixed-use idea, you know, ground floor, commercial, residential above. Um, and is a little bit in conflict with, conflict, sorry, with the story, the the building height story information that we received, which was again, ninety-five percent people were, you know, felt it was desirable or okay for one-story building, but then you have a mixed story also scoring pretty high, you know, relative especially to everything that you see here for residential uses. So that's something to keep in mind as well. And then I think this is um, sort of the last, you know, um, hard data point about from the visual preference survey, but we did ask about the entertainment use. So I talked earlier about the market potential index. That's MPI, is what it's called. Um, so basically for Enfield, the MPI index for entertainment uses was over a hundred. And how it works is that um, the MPI value, if it equals a hundred, basi- basically that represents the the national demand. So if you have something more than a hundred, it means that that particular area has a higher demand for that use. So your residents would have a greater participation rate in that activity than, say, the normal, the national average. And that was the case that the market study found for entertainment uses. So um, not maybe a typical part of a visual preference survey. This is not, you know, not classic visual preference survey at least, but we took the opportunity to ask folks um, to get a little feedback on maybe what they would like to see to sort of, you know, this is helpful information for a developer that maybe wants to redevelop to know what, you know, what are your residents going to come and and participate in, right? So um, Brewery scored the highest, it won at eighty-three percent. Um, followed closely though by your movie theaters or a concert venue at eighty-two. Um, and you can see the rest there, indoor golf, indoor sports complex, all scored very high. Um, and again, this is a combined number that I'm showing you here. We also asked them about gyms, indoor water parks, um, and a hotel. We we got some comments back on the hotel. The hotel scored about fifty-eight percent for purposes of comparison here. And then, I'm almost done. Um, last, for the visual preference survey, I'm not going to read these. These were just uh, two quotes out of um, over nine hundred written in responses that we got in addition to all of the other data points. Um, so I'll let you take a look at these as you'd like. Um, but just some general feedback then, you know, again, retail alone is is not what folks are looking for. I think a a consensus around some sort of residential, certainly not, you know, a hundred percent consensus. Folks um, did have concerns on traffic. Um, that was another, I'd say consensus, is that there is consensus on traffic congestion and traffic as a concern. Um, but making it more pedestrian-friendly, integrating more residential into a retail space. Um, and you know, uh, there's also themes about reconnecting to Thompsonville as well and and creating, you know, more green space, um, bike lanes and sidewalks. I don't focus on, I don't highlight it here in the presentation, but again, we did ask about bike lanes and bike-ped accommodations. And I think some of the reason why, um, I forget off the top of my head what it scored, um, but some of the noes, at least for bike and ped, um, seemed to come from a concern for safety. So that's, that's worth noting. Um, again, I did ask questions on themes that I haven't highlighted in this presentation. Um, again, haven't talked too much about the transit feedback or the building architecture. Um, New England architecture was was the favorite, I guess, if you you could say from the survey result. Um, and of note on the building architecture and some of the other questions that we asked, some of this information is going to more directly um, feed into our next steps. Um, and some of it is just, I think, useful information for the town, for planning and zoning commission, for a developer as far as, again, what the the residents in Enfield are interested in, what might help streamline their processes. Um, so it's not information that's going to get lost. Um, as I said, the town has all of the results from the visual preference survey. Um, but not all of it will be carried through um, directly. Next slide, please. Okay, and I promise we are almost done. This is pretty much my last slide. Um, just really quick for next steps. Um, we're working on creating a future redevelopment option, and that option is what's going to be assessed for traffic impacts. So i- in sort of very high level, our next step is going to be a traffic impact study. Um, and then we're going to look at mitigation strategies for the traffic that is generated. Um, originally, I will say, without, you know, trying to muddy the waters too much, originally, we were scoped to look at three land use alternatives for the site. Um, but as of right now, unless I hear it differently, you know, feedback from anybody tonight, we're not really sure that that's necessary. Um, based on the results of the market study and what can be, you know, a viable mix of land uses and how much land use, um, there's no real need to do any sort of give and take or decision-making on a variety of alternatives. We can kind of fit it all. We can kind of fit it all. So that's kind of that, you know, that next piece, based on market study, some site constraints, current zoning. Instead of doing, you know, three alternatives, we're, we're kind of thinking that maybe we should just plan for a maximum build-out. The idea behind this is, you know, regardless of what happens at the site, it can fit all of these things. The 690 residential units, the 300 townhomes, 180 square feet of retail, 38,000 square feet of medical office, and I think it's 65,000 feet of entertainment uses. If you create a traffic impact study based off of that, so this is what the market study is saying is viable. If you create a traffic impact study that uses that sort of as its starting point, the town will get a very good understanding of what the impact of that maximum build-out will be and how to mitigate it. And then regardless of what happens to the mall site, whether the developer retrofists them all, whether they demolish them all, as long as they do that maximum build-out or less, you'll have a pretty good understanding of what your traffic impacts are going to be and how you're going to need to mitigate it. So we're, we're still in discussions with town staff and would love to hear your feedback. Then, you know, probably with Connecticut Department of Transportation, also CT DOT. We, you know, need to work in concert with them as well as we move forward. But just trying to think of what is going to be the most useful information for the town. And at this point, based on, you know, again, the, the market study feedback that we got, site constraints, there are certain parcels that have been subdivided that we're not really planning to touch. And current zoning, again, that's mostly focused on the fact that warehousing uses and distribution uses are viable per the market study but are not currently allowed by zoning. So based on all that information, we think it might possibly make more sense to, to focus on the, the traffic impact piece and mitigation strategies for you going forward. But as well, I should also mention, next steps also include taking, you know, this land use development alternative, doing a financial feasibility analysis on that, and then we'll look at the buildup potential of those uses, and then we move into the, the traffic impact and mitigation piece as well. So I, I think that's all I have. I think you can move ahead one slide, Chris, I suppose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice presentation. I think I'll open it up for any comments or questions by fellow commissioners or staff at this point. Looking around. Commissioner Olamo?
Good evening. Thank you for the presentation. In the beginning of your presentation, you talked about sidewalks, crosswalks, traffic lights. At the end of your presentation, which I'm glad to hear that you're going to be talking with DOT. But back to the beginning of your presentation, it seems like those items are non-compliant currently. Is there an issue or a problem, or does that need to be corrected? The safety hazards with the sidewalks, crosswalks, and traffic signals. Thank you.
Excellent question. And I mean, I think the answer is yes. And how the process exactly works, obviously, a lot of the study area on the roadways here are state routes. So how that exactly works with DOT and, and the process for that? I also do know that there, every town, I think, is supposed to have an ADA transition plan. A lot of towns don't, but it, it gets at addressing and putting a plan in place for identifying these, you know, out-of-compliant locations and then having a plan in place to fix them. And it can be, you know, the plan can be, I think, as simple as like, we're going to address five intersections a year because this is our, you know, these are our budget constraints and our staff capacity realities. I don't have a ton of information on that, but I mean, yes, for sure. And I think, you know, in our final report, we're going to be detailing that out a bit and, and saying what you need to do to, to bring yourself up to compliance.
But if I may, if I may follow up as chairman, isn't, especially on 220s, again, that's a state road. So are you implying that the, basically, the town of Enfield is on the hook for making that ADA compliant and fixing those crosswalks, or is that the state of Connecticut's responsibility?
That is a good question.
Through you, through CROG, because I know how that works with, you know, transportation part. It was saying to me, it's the state of Connecticut's responsibility, we should identify those issues. It's not our road.
And I can definitely flag that as far as, as we move forward, maybe into the final report, when we get to that point, identifying, you know, responsibilities and roles. In my experience so far, and this, you know, don't take this as gospel, I can definitely kind of confirm this question for you. On previous work that we've done on state roads, the, the work that goes across the intersections, like across 220, I believe that typically falls to the state. Any of the side-road pieces, though, typically, I think, fall to the municipality. So I'm not sure that entirely answers your question, but...
Thank you. It's, it's a start. Thank you. Commissioner D'Antonio?
I had two questions. Thanks for your presentation. It was great. The first question is, how unique is the, the area for development compared to the region? You know, taking into account, you know, location, location of the highway, location at Thompsonville, local transit. How, how unique is it to, you know, our surrounding towns?
I'm going to write it down, otherwise I... To track my answer to your question. So I would say, I would say it depends on probably the use. And it's been a while since I've read the market study in full detail, and I'll probably do another look. And I would definitely encourage you, again, like I said, it is available on our project website at CROG, and I got that little guy down there, which typing that in is probably more complicated than it's worth. If you just go to the CROG website and search for Enfield, it'll pop up for you. But like I said, of, of note, the Enfield, the entertainment use, I'm sorry, that came out of the market study was particularly unique, I think, for Enfield. I don't know how you compare in the, in like the rest of the market area for, you know, housing, for example. One of the interesting points that I, I did see recently in the market study was, you know, as far as multifamily housing, at least for, for residential, 75, about 75% of Enfield's current housing is single-family. So I think the demand for multifamily might exist. And I, I think also it did mention that a lot of the multifamily that currently exists is in buildings that are nine units or less. So there's not a lot of offerings, like a slightly more dense version. And when I say dense, I mean, I don't mean necessarily crazy. I mean, you could, you could do something two or three-story to, again, support that retail as well. The, the residential is needed to support the retail that was, said that was viable. And I don't know, I don't know that anything else of note that I can recall is jumping out at me for, for uniqueness, to your point. I think the proximity of Thompsonville, though, is potentially, you know, a huge boon for this particular site and location. It's not far away. The current pedestrian accommodations is, at least, you know, on the pedestrian side of things, they seem much further. We didn't, we didn't even walk down nearly that far. We didn't even make it to Route 5 before the lack of pedestrian buttons and, and crosswalks seemed a little too daunting to, to want to do that by foot. But I think that could present a, a very unique opportunity. And I think when we were going into the market study, what we, what we wanted to make sure to do is that the uses that you would put here at, at the mall site, for example, in a future redevelopment situation, that they wouldn't compete with what you have in Thompsonville. And I believe the city speaks to that.
My second question, Lori, this one goes to you and staff as much. Just to kind of clarify, I assume there's going to be coordination with COG in terms of reviewing our existing zoning and making proposals to make certain development possible. Is that accurate?
Yes, I would say it's accurate. I, you know, we've been working with them for, well, well over a year now, and we, we also have been talking about the fact that we're going to be redoing our zoning regulations, and so that will be an item possibly maybe put into the POCD. But absolutely, we're looking at that. I, I do also want to comment that the owners of the Enfields Square Mall have been involved with the study and have given their input as to what they would like to see as well. So it, you know, and that's something that, you know, that's where we got a lot of these ideas as well, aside from the visual preference survey.
Great.
Oh, sorry. But I will add for you specifically to your question regarding the zoning, there is a task in the scope that has our consultant team identifying recommendations to zoning for that very reason. So if, if, you know, we identify something that your zoning currently doesn't allow that through this process we want, or, you know, vice versa, that we would be making recommendations for, for the town to be able to consider.
Thank you. We have been discussing this in part as a POCD too, Chris, so I imagine that's going to pop in discussions when we start talking about that in September. Commissioner Holinsky?
Yes, I had a question about the, you, you mentioned there was, there were several more pedestrian-type accidents on Elm Street versus Route 190. Is the volume of pedestrian traffic on 220 also higher than 190?
I would, yes. I don't know that we have bike-ped counts. Like, I don't know that a count has been done in, in recent time by the town. I don't believe it was, I don't know that the consultant did it. They did count, but not if it covered bike and ped. And again, anecdotally, I will say that when we were out there, again, we were on foot, and we, and we did a vehicle tour as well, way more pedestrians on 220. I think we saw one bicyclist actually using the sidewalk on 190 in our, in our time there. But 220 was, was pretty heavily traveled, all things considered, and, and Chris and I were going non-peak and saw a good handful of people, including, you know, a woman pushing her stroller. And it was also interesting, there was quite a few sort of like smaller, like mop-ed vehicles as well. They were, they were in the roadway, which is good. But yeah, I, I think anecdotally and potentially also crash or bike-ped count. I will confirm for you if that happened and what the data says on that.
And so, so do you have any theory behind why that traffic in, on that road is, is higher with pedestrian traffic? Is there any kind of reasoning for that?
I think that's a good question, and I think I would, I would love to hear from, you know, the folks at this meeting, if you have any insight onto why that's happening. I think some of it is potentially the, the uses maybe that you have along 220. I think some of it is the character. I mean, some, you know, of the, of the bike and pedestrian, not really bike, but the pedestrian infrastructure that you have on 220 is incomplete, but you do tend to have it at least on both sides of the road, which I know is not the case on 190. There's some pretty big stretches where there's no sidewalk along the road there. And, you know, some, some key intersections that I, I was trying to, I forget which intersection that is at 190 and potentially freshwater. But the massive, you know, access to one of the, the shopping center there, but no ped button, like no way to feel like you can safely cross. So there's a bit more present, I would say, on, on 220.
But Selms Street is, is more of a straight corridor to the Thompsonville District? You know, so that may, that may be something that... What? I'm sorry?
If I may jump in for half a second, Elm Street is a better connection to Thompsonville. 190 just hooks into going over the Connecticut River, so...
Over the overpass to... But, but I do a lot of traveling on 190 because I live off of 190, and I, I notice a lot of foot traffic regardless of sidewalk or not. They're walking, making their own paths, you know, from, from Hazardville to Palumba Drive. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of traffic, and there are bicyclists there, too. Now, perhaps they make a quick turn and go into Palumba, and now they're in the, you know, now they're in the mall-type area. So, so maybe you don't see as many, you know, in front of the shopping centers and so on. But anyway, it's just, just a few questions, clarifications. Thank you.
Commissioner Olamo?
Yes, just a, a follow-up. On that crash information in the pedestrian info, could you break it down by years? Because I think some of the years that were studied were during the pandemic. Not tonight, but I just want to see the crash information during the pandemic versus not in the pandemic.
I can definitely get you that. I know we have it. No, I was actually looking at it because I was, I couldn't remember off the top of my head when the fatality had occurred, so I had to look at the data for the, to get the 2017 date. And I can tell you that there was many fewer crashes that happened in 2020, I think probably as a result of just not nearly as many people being on the road, going to work. So your, your AM and your, your peak travel, I think, was much less. And I recall that like 2017, 2018, 2019, all of your trips, or your, your crashes, rather, your crashes were well, or over 100, some more than others. And then I think in 2020, you're looking like mid-80. So it definitely took a noticeable dip, but I can get you this specific.
Okay. Yeah. And I, and just a dovetail, I think Mr. Holinsky is correct about 190 and Elm. 190, there's really no way, there's no access. There's not really a lot of residential around 190. Elm Street is surrounded by residential. So I think that, that's the key.
And then definitely a question for you as far as, you know, what, do you want to, do you want to build on that 220 being a slightly more pedestrian-friendly access piece? And do you want to build on that connection to Thompsonville? That's definitely something that, you know, feedback like that will be helpful for us as we move forward.
Again.
Okay. Yeah, I just had a, a comment based on Commissioner Olamo's comments. I see a lot of people walking 190 across the overpass over 91 towards Thompsonville and taking that, that exit that, you know, connects up to Route 5. And they seem to be mainly workers, you know, restaurant workers because they have their uniforms on. And so there's a lot of that kind of traffic going that way. Now, they must live in that area versus the Elm Street area, you know? But that seems to me, that's really dangerous.
It is dangerous.
Because people are getting onto 91, they're coming off 91. And so that's, that's something to keep in mind.
And there's never been a sidewalk there other than a man-made one. There's a path that's been there since I was a kid that people have been tramping on. Any other questions for Commissioner LaFagus?
Yes, that's a lot of information to process. When you were going over the, the survey results with a townhouse and mixed-use business downstairs and residential upstairs, you noted an inconsistency in the survey results. But I thought there, there was another inconsistency where the retail space on the first floor and residential upstairs was preferred. It conflicts with the, the preference for a private entrance as well. And likely, if you have retail downstairs and living space upstairs, you're going to need a common entrance. So that, this is just a comment, not a question.
Yeah. And I think that's what, it's a good comment, and I actually, when I was putting the slide together, I had a similar thought. And I think maybe it speaks to the desire for a mix. And, you know, being, being very desirable for, you know, a townhouse with an individual door doesn't necessarily mean that the same person didn't also say very desirable for the mixed use because they were able to do that.
Well said. Well, I want to thank you very much. And basically, I do concur with your next steps, working with staff to, to go on to the next level of this study. I do appreciate you being with us tonight and all the information you shared with us. And I think it's very helpful for us to get a good understanding where you are and where we are, town staff, and where we're going forward with this. So without further ado, I think we're going to move on. Again, thank you for doing this presentation for us tonight. Do appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Sure, I get this copy to Lori.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Cheers.
Thank you, Caitlin and Chris.
All right, if you just give us a couple of minutes, we get technically cleaned up from this presentation. Okay, are we all set? Just going to grab a drink of water and we're going? Ben, we'll, we'll read it and then I'll let you... Okay. Are you all set?
No. Yeah, I'm trying to get it.
I don't know. Yeah, you can cheers.
I'm trying to get it downward. Is that going down? I switched chairs. I know. I can't.
I'm sorry. No, we're not recessing. Yeah, all right, we're ready to start again. We're just doing some musical chairs. We're just doing some musical chairs. Are you all set to read the PH? Yep. Okay, guys, we're starting. Okay, we're starting back up. Moving on to the next item in the agenda, new public hearings. PH 3040 MA, would Secretary please read the opening of this public hearing?
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting Thursday, June 30th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 820 Enfield Street. Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application, PH 3040 MA, 1297 Enfield Street, Zone Change Request for HR 33 to SDD, Felician Sisters of North America Real Estate, applicant owner, MAP 49, Lot 2, HR 33 Zone.
Thank you very much. Before we start, Commissioner Guerilla would like to mention something for the record. Thank you. Your mic on?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. This for the applicant question, does the applicant want me to recuse myself from the public meeting tonight?
Yes, we do, Mr. Guerilla, we do. Based upon your comments in September, I think, to paraphrase, I think your comments were that you would not approve this, this zone change, no matter what proposal was being made. I'm paraphrasing, I didn't get a chance to go back and look. I didn't know that you were going to be seated tonight because you're, I believe you're an alternate, so, but since you've asked the question to me, I have to answer in affirmative, yes, we are requesting that you recuse yourself and that the chairman sits somebody else.
Okay.
Whether you do so or not is up to you, I'm just making the request.
Out of respect for the board, I'm going to grant you that. I'm going to recuse, and I wish you and the Felician Sisters well.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Guerilla, thank you. Appreciate it. Having said that, we do have two alternates that'll be sitting in tonight, as you already know. Commissioner LaFicus is sitting in for one of the regular members, Commissioner Guerilla was sitting in for one of the regular members. Commissioner DeAntonio will now pick up that lantern. I do want to mention with that is that, as both of you well know, the regular commissioners, next meeting, if they watch the tape, they catch up on all the meetings, can request to be seated back again. It's really going to be up to those two individuals, those regular members, their decision. I'm not sure what they're going to do, but we'll wait and see. But meantime, at least tonight, you are full-time members in this hearing. The other thing I need to mention also is that we did recognize the receiving of a petition tonight to cause a supermajority for a vote on this issue. This petition has not been verified or certified yet, the staff still has to do that. So based on that, we have no idea whether it would cause us to have to firm this with five votes or four votes, and so we will not be voting on anything tonight. I just wanted to let everyone know that right up front until we have clarification on a petition, so there will be no votes tonight. We'll proceed with the hearing, and we will be leaving the hearing open. Also, one other thing, if you don't mind, Attorney Landalina, anyone who wishes to speak tonight after they're done with their presentation, please sign up on the sign-up sheets here, so we'll be using that to indicate who's the next in line to speak. So I think, and roll call here for this hearing, please.
Lou Fiore.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella.
Absent.
Frank Alima.
Here.
Karan Majmudar.
Absent.
Ken Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Guerilla is absent for this portion. Christian DeAntonio.
Here.
Nick LaFicus.
Here.
Thank you. There is a quorum here of seven, so please proceed. Identify yourselves for the record, please, I guess, if you don't mind, all of you, if you don't mind, and then we can proceed.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Attorney Carl Landalina from Fehe and Landalina in Windsor Locks, representing the applicants, the Felician Sisters of North America Real Estate Trust, I believe is the full name of the owner of the property. So just there, I think there's a few of you, at least the chairman and Mr. DeAntonio weren't here in September when we came before this very commission seeking the same zone change. We heard from the commission as well as members of the public about a number of things, so we decided the best course of action would be to withdraw that application, which we did. And we went back to the drawing board, so to speak, the development team did, and came up with a new proposal, which you're going to see tonight, which we believe took into consideration some of the comments and concerns we heard from the commission as well as the public. And we did some other things, which you're going to hear about tonight in terms of informing the public of the project as we would like to propose it tonight. So I'm joined here, Mr. Chairman. To the extreme left is Sister Nancy. She tells me I can't pronounce her last name, so I won't try. She's a Felician Sister of long standing. She's going to give you sort of an overview of how we got to the place we are tonight. And to her right is Bridget Armstrong, who is a member of the Felician Sisters family. And seated to my left is Kristin Anderson, who's with the development team at the Community Builders. They are the development team of choice, handpicked by the Felician Sisters. We've got some folks behind me which are here if you have any more, I guess, technical questions. And they include Miles Brown from the architectural firm of Amenta Emma, a very prestigious architectural firm across the country, as well as Stephanie White from the firm of Fussin O'Neil, again, a top-notch engineering firm located in Manchester, Connecticut, who can answer more of the technical questions that you might have. So we're going to start, and then I'll make my last presentation on what I think are the legal aspects, the stuff you don't really need to hear about, but I have to tell you anyway for the record. So the ladies will go first, followed by, you know, the ogre attorney. So, thank you.
You can use that one.
Okay. Well, good evening. As Greg said, my name is Sister Nancy. For the record, my name is Sister Nancy Marie Pietsevich, and most people have difficulty with that name. Until a year ago, I lived on the Enfield campus since 1980, and many of you in the neighborhood have probably have seen me over the years walking the three convent dogs that we had. Last year, I was elected to serve on the provincial leadership team, which is our governing body overseeing the Sisters and our ministries across North America. Just to put some things in context about a little bit of history of the Felician Sisters, in 1874, five sisters traveled from Poland to America to minister to the Polish immigrants. They had no idea what they were to do, but they carried within them the desire to go wherever the people needed them. Over the years, the Felician Sisters planted seeds, always responding to the needs of the time. We had childcare centers in high schools, colleges, and universities. We opened hospitals and nursing homes, senior living facilities, and various social service and outreach centers. Soup kitchens and food pantries, retreat centers, and yes, even street ministries to the homeless were also part of our responses to the needs we found around us. Teaming up with our many dedicated lay partners over the years, many of these ministries continue to exist to carry on the dream in the words of our founders, "To love is to serve." Always looking to where the needs are and remaining faithful to our calling, we continue to look for new ways to respond to the current needs. In recent years, as our numbers began to dwindle here on the Enfield campus, we, the Sisters, began to realize that things needed to change, that nothing ever remains the same, that we could no longer sustain what was. We recognize, including ourselves, that nobody likes change, except perhaps a wet baby. We would all like to go back to what was, to our comfort zones. It's scary to risk doing something new, but we, the Sisters, realize that doing nothing is not a viable option. After much prayer and discussion, we began to dream of possibilities. Knowing that we could not do this on our own, we reached out to others who have the expertise that we lack. We hired a consulting firm to help us identify the needs that exist in the Enfield community and how we might better help serve those needs. Two pressing needs surfaced. They were affordable housing for seniors and low-income working families. After a few years of vetting builders and developers, we teamed up with the Community Builders, a nonprofit organization, because their values and their operating model is in sync with our Felician core values. We Sisters have no children to pass on our legacy, but we do have the community within which we have lived, the broader community of Enfield. It is our hope that we can continue to respond to the new needs of our time and make the lives of those around us a bit better. With the passing of a zone change, we can create a thriving intergenerational campus where all feel safe and accepted, for doing nothing is not an option. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hello? Okay, sorry, couldn't hear you. So the Felicians have always been visionary. They're smart, they're hardworking, they're committed, determined, and they're realistic. They recognized they needed a plan on their campus and because their community is declining, and there are only 24 Sisters on the campus currently, consequently, they've had to close buildings and they've had to consolidate their living spaces. And closed and empty portion of buildings cost money to maintain, even at the most basic level. Ongoing, this is not financially sustainable. Doing nothing is not an option. The Felicians don't want to leave their home. They want to be able to continue to support the ministries on the campus, Enfield Montessori School, and the senior apartments at St. Francis Residence. And they don't want to just stay on the campus. They want to make something better for everyone in the town of Enfield, like they always have, because they are called to serve where is needed. When the Sisters began dreaming of the future possibilities of the campus, they asked themselves, how do we continue to serve the town of Enfield? And lo and behold, they recognized they had already planted a seed on the campus, and it was already growing. It was an intergenerational campus started between their two ministries, Enfield Montessori and St. Francis Residence. They want the future possibilities to maintain the character of their campus, their beautiful buildings, and to protect the historic land. In 90 years, the Felician Sisters want people to remember who they are by how they served the community, through housing, education, supportive services, and mostly love of neighbor. Their legacy will be preserved because the Felician Sisters will continue to own and oversee the property. The Felician Sisters built their beautiful campus, and they want to see it sustained through an intergenerational campus by adapting their buildings. And as they themselves have said, it is time for transformation. This will provide an economic benefit to the town of Enfield by taxes that will be paid and attracting working families that not only will work in Enfield, but shop and eat. And the Sisters don't want to just build spaces, they want to build homes where Sisters on the campus have access, as well as the residents, to wellness services like physical therapy, a care manager, community space. Families on the campus would have a beautiful yard, their own play space, after-school programming, and a fitness center. Nature is very important to the Sisters, and the project preserves specimen trees, it creates walking paths, and the buildings are designed to be lead silver or greater. After considering the large amount of community feedback that we went out and gathered, the updated plan that you'll see in a moment consists of 250 units while maintaining 90% of the green space. Five existing buildings would be preserved, and two new buildings would be constructed. The new buildings you'll see in a moment will be built in the back of the property, behind existing structures, and their height will not exceed four stories, which is the height of the current buildings, thereby ensuring the existing view of the campus is maintained and that view from Enfield Street. We estimate that in 10 years, and this is a 10-year plan done over the course of four phases, so in 10 years, there would be a little over 300 people on the campus, about half of which would be seniors. Over half the units proposed will be for seniors. And of the 250 units being proposed, 80%, just under 80%, will be one-bedroom, and the balance, or 53 units, will be two-bedroom. There are no three-bedroom, there are no four-bedroom units. And this number of two-bedroom units limits the number of children on the campus, which we're estimating to be in the range of 16 to 53 children. So what does an intergenerational campus look like? Well, first, the Sisters are still present. This development will not displace or cause the Sisters to have to move. There will be more senior housing available to those seniors with a fixed income of $40,000 or less, and who will enjoy, along with the Sisters, amenities for them, as I've mentioned before, wellness services, sitting in a gazebo, enjoying nature, watching the children. You might also see on this campus one of our brave first responders and their child playing outside, or perhaps an Enfield high school teacher who can now afford to live in Enfield while she works, or a young working couple who dream of owning their own home and now are able to save for that home. People living on this campus will be working families earning between $40,000 and $80,000 There have been many comments made, and we want also tonight to clarify some misconceptions about the project. The development will be taxable. Nearby TCB properties generate an average of about $1,000 a year per unit of tax revenue. There will not be hundreds of children on the campus. The number of units, the fact that most of them are one-bedroom and the others are two-bedroom limits the number of occupancies in the units and thereby limits the number of children. Again, we estimate between 16 and 53 children on campus in 10 years. There also were concerns expressed that the development would increase costs to the taxpayers. Infrastructure capacity, like water, sewer, trash collection, et cetera, is part of a review completed by the Enfields Town Engineering Department. And if changes to the infrastructure are needed, they are incorporated into the plan at a cost to the developer, and all of that has to be approved by the town. And finally, traffic. What you'll see in a moment is that we've added an entrance, we've intentionally separated traffic on the campus to improve traffic flow, we will have eliminated the cut-through road from Post Office Road, and a recent traffic study showed that traffic would not be negatively impacted. So the Sisters and their lay partners, they've actually been working and discussing and developing this plan since 2015. And after presenting an initial idea here, feedback sessions have been held with those on the campus, neighbors, community members, and town officials. And this feedback has been integrated into the redesign you're now about to see that Kristin will be sharing with you now. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Kristin Anderson. I'm the senior project manager for the Community Builders. I'm going to take my time because I'm trying to answer all the questions that came up at the last meeting. If there's anything I missed, please feel free to ask us during the comment period. We're happy to take a step back. But one thing I wanted to point out is that we have done a significant amount of outreach around this project, both leading into the last public hearing meeting that we had brought to you and then also since that time. So that includes meeting with town leadership, including the planning department, economic development department, town manager and mayor. And we're bringing forward this proposal today because overall, we had received positive feedback and felt that this was in a place that it was ready to re-review with you all. We've also had two meetings with the ART, which is the technical planning, or technical staff that reviews typically more detailed site plans. Conversations that we had with them, I know this came up at the last meeting, were things around sort of access easements, turning radiuses, fire codes. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, at these meetings, we've discussed all these different sort of needs and making sure, looking at the plan with those considerations. We, again, also received sort of positive comments based on sort of where the plan is now. We did not receive any comments around concerns around increased EMS services that would be needed for the property. But overall, just given where the plans are at this point, the feedback was, we have to come back once there's plans that are more fully developed. We've also had information sessions where we directly invited abutters of the property that are on that abutters list. We sent them direct mailings and hosted a few information sessions in the fall. We've spoken with the Commission on Aging and the Enfield Housing Authority to specifically dig into some of the more needs unique to Enfield around senior housing and just housing in general for families. We also had two open community meetings that we advertised publicly to talk about this plan leading into this. And of course, have talked multiple times with parents of the Enfield Montessori School, which are on the campus, as well as our advisory committee, which is made up of multiple people in the community. So after all of that feedback, you know, we sort of took a new approach and sort of rethought the site development, the layout of this project. So the sort of first approach that we took was, let's think about sort of the land uses on the site. One thing that we heard that was really important was open space and how important that is, both to the character of the neighborhood, as well as to the uses of the residents that are there, as well as the schoolchildren that are there. And so a big part of this plan is preserving the open space that already exists on the campus. So you'll see this plan encompasses about 70% of the campuses is preserved open space. As Bridget pointed out, it preserves about 90% of what is there already. We also focused significantly on preservation area. One of the pieces of feedback that we heard at the last meeting was really, this particular zone is meant to repurpose existing buildings, not necessarily be a new construction driver, though that is allowed under the zone. And so really sort of making sure that we're thinking about, okay, what are the key areas of preservation? What are the adaptive reuses? How do we take these properties that are currently not contributing and put them back online for the community? And then there is a smaller new development area, as you can see in the southeast corner, that orange, that orange block. I'll say that the building coverage of the site that we're proposing, it's currently at about 7% of the whole site. This plan would make it about 10% overall. The other concept that we looked at was the different uses on the site. So again, really building off of the existing senior uses that are there. In that blue band, that's where the current St. Francis Residence are, which is an elderly 22-unit apartment complex that's already on the campus. And so the proposal that we're putting forward would attempt to make that whole band a senior housing band, so converting the convent to senior housing, as well as expanding St. Felix Center, which is currently vacant, into senior housing. We also had a lot of conversations with the Enfield Montessori School and the parents there, and one of the key priorities for this was a full separation of the school uses from the rest of the uses on campus. So you'll see there's now sort of a concentration of where the Enfield Montessori School programming would be on the campus. I just want to add that TCB does have a lot of experience in working with school populations. So a number of our properties in other communities are built directly adjacent to schools, and through our community life programming, we actually do a number of after-school programs that we partner with schools. So we have a lot of experience in working closely with school-aged children. On the other side of it, we've also developed buildings that have commercial spaces, which then end up getting rented out by daycare centers. So directly within our buildings, we have children that are currently going there and getting education. And at the rear of the property would be any of the sort of new construction or non-age-restricted So this is the overall updated concept that we're proposing, just to orient you, and we'll come back to this and can answer questions as well. The white buildings are all existing buildings on the parcel. The beige buildings are what would be new. So it consists of an addition onto one of the existing buildings, as well as two new buildings. This is a change, and I'll talk a little bit more about the feedback and explain sort of what's changed. The dark gray areas are sort of the roadways. Light gray areas are the walking paths and sidewalks. And then the green spaces are the open spaces, as well as additional landscaping. Oh, and I should just add the yellow line, I'm sorry, it was the historic boundary. So these...
Sorry, interrupt. Could you, yeah, thank you.
So I'm going to point out a couple of the key changes that were made since the last time that we spoke with you and the feedback that we received. So one of the key changes based on the feedback was less density, fewer units. So right now, the site has about, when you calculate the existing dwelling units there, it's about 5.3 units per acre. We had proposed at the last time we met with you a 13-unit-per-acre site, which was based on the existing elderly limits of 15 units per acre and the multifamily of 10 units per acre. But the feedback that we heard was that's really too much for Enfield, it's too much for this particular site. So we've dropped that down to 9.3 units per acre, which ends up being about 250 units in total for the whole site, including the units that are already there. Minimizing impervious surfaces, I think there was, I think Commissioner DeGray, you brought up some good comments about being worried about having to put too much parking and then it becomes a sea of asphalt. And so, again, really thinking about sort of the concentration of developments and repurposing the existing buildings to really ensure that we're not having to add unnecessary impervious surfaces. And again, going back to that preservation of open space. Maintaining sightlines from Enfield, one of the key things that we've really heard loud and clear is just a real concern about how this is going to impact the historic district, understandably so. And so you'll see on that map right there, there's a white line going across the center that we're calling the view line, which is about 550 feet back. Any new construction is proposed behind that view line. So what we're trying to demonstrate with this is what you're seeing from Enfield Street are the existing buildings, and that, you know, sort of behind that 550-foot limit is where any sort of new changes to the site would take place. We didn't measure it from South Road. We had spoken with the abutters on South Road as well, but there's also a significant setback that we're proposing from South Road. The traffic and parking, yeah, the traffic and parking is sort of identified with those orange lines. So a couple of things about parking. One is, the last time we came to you, we had proposed, I think, 1.1 units per acre. This is increasing that to 1.45 units per acre, and I believe we, oh, sorry, spaces per unit. And we did provide, I think, a breakdown of that calculation for you to help get at that. But this is complying with sort of the existing elderly parking requirements and the state requirements around parking limits. The other piece that we heard concerns around was traffic flow. So what you'll see is there's three very distinct entrances that we're proposing for this site. The front entrance would be primarily for the school, and so this is already sort of occurring, and it allows the parents that are dropping off their kids to, again, get off of South Road and quickly get onto the property. There's a parking lot that they have spaces that will be reserved for them right adjacent to there. So again, minimizing that traffic, school flow in the morning. There is a senior housing entrance, which would only go to the senior housing band. So again, you know, seniors are going to have different traffic patterns, there is going to be bus access for the seniors, and so really sort of concentrating their entrances more at the center. And then the rear entrance, it would be for the new housing, non-age-restricted housing. And what you'll notice is we're very intentionally trying to prevent, you know, sort of people all coming in, going out of the same entrances to disperse that traffic flow. Each of them will have different demand needs in terms of whether they're coming in and out. So this is a way that we tried to incorporate that feedback. The blue spaces on there are the amenities that are being offered. So you'll see the chapel is being preserved, that will continue to be a place of worship. There is a blue circle above that, which is a labyrinth, which is a big priority for the sisters and for the St. Francis Residence. We're also proposing a wellness center. This is sort of stemming from conversations about the needs for seniors and being able to provide services for the seniors that are there, as well as the sisters who would benefit from this. Thank you. And then there's also some other outdoor amenities, like a gazebo was really important to the seniors on the campus, and then a playground for any children that do live in the non-age-restricted housing, the family housing. Other amenities include storage, fitness center, and we're, there's currently a commercial kitchen on the campus that we'd be looking to turn into some sort of a community kitchen. So there were a number of other areas of concern that we heard, but aren't necessarily addressed specifically in the design element, that I just wanted to acknowledge and answer questions about. So one, we did hear concerns about affordable housing. So one of the things I just wanted to emphasize, Bridget already touched on it, but the mix of housing is really important here in terms of what type of good community we're trying to build. So the proposed housing would be affordable senior housing, as well as housing that's typically designed towards working families, so meaning that there's certain income restrictions that would be designed to really target families earning $40,000 to $80,000 a year. We also heard a lot about how important this property is to the community and just a feeling of sort of loss of that change. So again, ways that we're trying to really help address this, knowing that it is a big change for the community, would be thinking about design measures that are taken to ensure that, you know, the preservation feels the same, that the look and the feel of the campus are not changing, and that it continues to contribute to the historic district that's there. But also, you know, I think in talking with the sisters more, really understanding that this provides a path forward for the sisters to be able to continue to oversee the property like they have for the last 90 years by creating a sustainable model. The concerns around increase in people, there would be an increase from, especially from what it is right now, given the dwindling number of sisters. But, you know, one thing that we've really tried to look at is what's the existing infrastructure there? What was it built for? And back when the sisters were really sort of in their heyday, you know, what was the capacity that was there? We've also had conversations with the WCPCA to really understand what would the impact be on the water and sewer. And really, again, focusing on the reuse and repurposing of the existing buildings is the primary focus, so that we're building off of the existing infrastructure. There's been questions about the, who really owns this and what's the oversight? And so just to clarify, the sisters continue to own the property and continue to have oversight over it. And really, sort of this model, the question was posed back, like, you know, what is the bottom line? What is really needed? And sort of what's being proposed to you is really what allows the sisters to continue to oversee the property and provide the level of service in their ministries, this new ministry included, by providing housing moving forward. And then, of course, concern around property management. So, you know, like, who's picking up the trash? Like, who's making sure people aren't trespassing? Who's doing the snow removal? Who's mowing the lawn? You know, these are the key questions that impact all the neighbors as well. And so just to reiterate that the scale of this plan allows for full-scale onsite property management services, that includes maintenance managers, property managers that oversee the screening of new tenants. We also have community life services that are the resident services that provide those extra programming for people who live there. And our organization is nationally recognized and does this all over the country. So again, this is just a bit of a timeline to show you really what type of scale we're looking at and when this would happen. This really is a long-term vision. I think that's why the sisters started planning this a few years ago and has started to bring this together, is that nobody wants to be in a position where you're forced to have to make a change without having the ability to direct what that change is going to be. So this 10-year plan includes, you know, being here before you tonight, eventually bringing forward, if the zone change is approved, much more detailed site plan, site plans to be able to review, that have much more feedback from the different town planning departments, and then sort of moving forward with beginning the different phase work. At the absolute earliest that anything would happen, it would be 2024. The primary focus for the first phase would be the St. Felix Center, which is senior housing. And the reason for that is it's been vacant for over two years now. And then moving forward every few years, we would propose, you know, trying to do a second phase. And so there'd be lots of opportunities to have ongoing feedback and communication with the commission moving forward. That's good. I'm just going to turn it over now to Carl to talk a little bit more about the zoning.
Thank you, Kristin. Again, for the record, Carl Landelina. So I'm sure this is not the first time you've been asked to do a zone change. I do know that this district that you, hasn't been in effect for very long. My understanding, it's only been used one other time, I could be wrong about that. But the old Blair Manor nursing or skilled nursing facility went through this process a year or so ago to change the use of that from the skilled nursing facility into an apartment-type use. One of the things I will just add to the record is that that property was also in a residential zone. I believe that was an R-40 or R... The field card for the Blair Manor project said R-40, the map says R-80, so I was confused at one or the other, but it certainly was a residential zone. So this has been done before in a residential zone, and that's why we thought it was appropriate. And for those of you who weren't here when we first approached you, before we came with an actual plan, we came to this commission in an informal way, as you recall, and said, this is what we're thinking about doing into the future. We've gone through your zoning regulations. Which zone, we can do a multifamily zone, we can do this zone, that zone. What gives us and you the most flexibility? We can create a new zone, which sometimes we do as zoning attorneys. And the consensus was from the commission that the special development district was the way to go. So that's why we chose that. So, but as far as any zone change is concerned, you know that you're allowed to do so under your own regulations, as well as the enabling statutes in the Connecticut statutes. And the one that's, you most particularly go by is 8.8-2 and 8-3. So in terms of what the statute requires, it says such regulations, your zoning regulations and boundaries, and again, I'm just reading from some of my materials and, you know, and this was all in your packet from two weeks ago, I just decided I'd pull my stuff out to make it easier for you to review. So such regulations and boundaries shall be established, changed, or repealed only by a majority vote of all the members of the zoning commission, except as otherwise provided in this chapter. In making its decision, the commission shall take into consideration the plan of conservation and development prepared pursuant to Section 8-23. So that's one of the things you have to do, is consider what's in your current plan of conservation and development, and I'll go through that and point out some areas in the current plan, as well as some things which I know you've been discussing because it's way past time for you to redo your plan of conservation and development, and you're working with Don Poland to accomplish that. Then if you also go to 8-2, this, what I just read you was from 8-3, talks about, and that's the first sort of underlying section in 8-2 regulation, such regulations, all right, shall be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan, and in adopting such regulations, the commission will consider, again, the plan of conservation and development. So the comprehensive plan, which I'm sure all of you know, but again, just for the record, is essentially your zoning regulations and your zoning map. So if you're changing a zone, does it, is it consistent, not, or have you considered what's in the plan of conservation and development? And secondarily, does it sort of comport with your zoning plan, so to speak, which is the regulations in the map? So that someone asking to maybe rezone a property as an industrial use in a residential area probably doesn't fit with the comprehensive plan. And I'll go through the zoning regulations themselves and to explain why we... And I'll go through the zoning regulations themselves and to explain why we believe that we do, in fact, comply with the comprehensive plan. We're going to skip the next one until a little later. But the case law says that in addition, when you consider a zone change and a text amendment, that first you must look at what you're allowed to do under the statutes. Eight dash two is your general zoning enabling act. All right? So is there something that you, some factor that's stated in eight dash two that ties into what's being proposed? And I would say with respect to our proposal, yes. If you look down at the end of the first page, it says such regulations shall also encourage development of housing opportunities, including opportunities for multifamily dwellings consistent with soil types, terrain, and infrastructure capacity for all residents of the municipality in the planning region in which the municipality is located. Then if you go to the top of the next page, it says such regulations shall also promote housing choice and economic diversity in housing, including housing for both low and moderate income households, and shall encourage the development of housing, which will meet the housing needs identified in the state's consolidate plan for housing and community development prepared pursuant to eight dash thirty-seven T, and the housing component and other components of the state plan of conservation and development prepared pursuant to sixteen A twenty-six. So that's sort of the framework of, I guess, what your role would be in determining whether this is an appropriate zone change or not appropriate. So the first thing I'd like to point to actually would be the plan of, the comprehensive plan, which is your zoning regulations and your map. So if you look at the uses that are there on the property now, we've got residential uses, we've got, we've got housing, we've got the church, and we've got senior housing on the property. Those are basically the three components that are there now, and then, of course, the Montessori school. So the four components. Were this project to go forward, that will not change. Those are the components we are going to enhance. There is going to be more senior housing. There's going to be some housing for working families. The religious use, the chapel, is not going to change. The Montessori school will remain. So we think in terms of what's there and what's already presently allowed under your comprehensive plan, i.e. your zoning regulations, we certainly can say that we comply with that. So, and you know that the S, this zone is sort of what I would call a floating zone. It doesn't exist on the ground anywhere until it's placed by an applicant through this board. So certainly, it's something that you thought out. It's sort of a new zoning tool within the last decade to give the commission and landowners, property owners, the right to have some flexibility. This one, I call it adaptive, most of the towns I deal with, we just call it an adaptive reuse regulation, but it's the same thing. What do you do when there's buildings on any property that are being underutilized or vacant? And you know very well that economically, it makes no sense to take care of buildings which are vacant or underutilized. So this is the regulation that you put in place to allow any number of uses. You have great flexibility in determining how these buildings would be adapted to different uses. We're not asking for that. We're asking to just enhance what's there and continue out with the uses that are there and enlarge upon that. So I think certainly the comprehensive plan component has been met. I looked at your plan of conservation and development, which actually goes back to, I think it's two thousand and six, I believe. But if you look at the housing component, and I looked at the, I'm sorry?
Two thousand and eleven.
Two thousand and eleven, okay. Good. Well, there were some changes, but the basic plan is from two thousand and six. But yes, okay. So if you look at, I provided to you in the housing section, goal number two, and these are broad goals, and then there are certain policy statements made to how to implement them. So goal number two from this board, from two thousand and six and two thousand and eleven, is we will become a community of diverse, unique, and unified neighborhoods that preserves, enhances, and strengthens its historic and natural heritage.
Could you do us a favor, please? Identify maybe what page that is in the book?
Yeah, it's forty-four, yeah, of your P O C D.
Thank you. And that's the two thousand and eleven P O C D.
Right, yes. I didn't want to throw the whole thing in there, just, you know. All right, if you look at the, we already got enough paper in our file.
Yeah, it's all right.
So the, you know, and based upon that, you've set forth certain policy goals. Number one, to the town of Enfield will pursue a comprehensive strategy to maintain and enhance quality housing. All right? Number one has to do with what you would do in terms of establishing a collaborative or comprehensive program. Number two policy goal, the town of Enfield will encourage a healthy and diverse housing market, where housing is affordable, and there is access to rental and home ownership opportunities for all, including expanding choice of housing and revise zoning regulations to include multifamily uses. Three, work with public and private housing developers to address the shelter, housing, and service needs of the homeless, poor, and other with special needs, so on and so forth. And you can read on in terms of those sections from the plan. On page forty-six, policy two point four, the town of Enfield will recognize and protect the cultural, architectural, and economic values of his, its historic resources. And certainly, I would think that, and probably you'll hear from many people in this room to say that this campus is one of the most unique and historic resources that this town has. And the goal here is to continue with that, to improve upon it, expand on it a little bit, but nothing that's there now is going to be removed. All right? The, all of the buildings there are going to be preserved, and this will allow preservation of this campus that exists now into the, for the next hundred years. Then if you go to page one oh four of your present plan of conservation and development, it talks about the state's long-range housing plan, and that one of the goals of this commission would be to implement some of the things that the state's housing plan was looking for. And that's why the reference in the statutes to the state's plan of conservation and development, which we'll touch on in a minute. Now, I know that you are working towards a new P O C D, and it's not been approved yet. It's not, you know, I know I've done that a few times, and it's a long and arduous process, and...
And if I may, attorney, it hasn't even been presented to the rest of the board in some cases, so.
Okay.
I'd appreciate maybe if we kind of stood away from the working one, if we stayed away from it, because it hasn't even been presented to the other members yet.
All right, well, it's in the record, and, you know, so it's there, some of the possible language. And I also included some of the slides from a presentation made to you by Mr. Poland, which discusses this very issue. And there's nothing new here in his plan. It wasn't, there's not a lot of secrets there. Your population is aging. All right? Your retail sector is your main driver for economic survival. Your, the number of schoolchildren in your schools is decreasing. And the conclusion drawn by Mr. Poland and many others in his position is that multifamily housing is what you need to look at in the future. And you have done a good job, I will say, with that. One thing, and this is not criticism at all, what a lot of towns like, and if I, you know, I live west of the river, and, you know, you drive up and down Route ten, and you see all these new, what we call the luxury apartments, that going for twenty-five hundred dollars a month for a two-bedroom, and you have some of them in a section of town, and they're great. They serve a need. They certainly do. But I really haven't seen anything yet here that services the need for the, sort of the working family, which I think this project will. So I'll just skip over that, Mr. Chairman, at your request, but the information's there.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Then the next thing in my presentation is the state's plan of conservation and development, which you are obligated to review in terms of this proposal, first by your own P O C D and regulations. Now, it says revised draft, okay? And at the end of, only several pages I gave you, is House Joint Resolution number one oh seven, which passed the legislature and became law in May of this year, just a few weeks ago. So now the draft plan, the state P O C D, and if you go on the website today, you'll see, you'll still see it, it says draft on it, and probably say draft on it for the next five years. I don't know. But that's the plan that was finally approved after probably many years of being in draft form. But you can look at that at your leisure, and, you know, one of the main principles is the manage, growth management principle, to expand housing opportunities and design choices to accommodate a variety of household types and needs. And then on page ten of that is some information about the policies of the state to enhance housing mobility choice and so on and so forth, across income levels and so on and so forth. So just for the record. Now, we touched on this in our, in our presentation, I think Kristin and maybe Bridget did as well, but there have been a number of studies. Rutgers University did a study, MIT did a major study, the effects of multifamily housing. Rutgers study was, hit almost many components about how many children you see in different bedroom-type units, how many bedrooms, how many children, so on and so forth. And the MIT study studied, I forgot the definition or the, how they characterize affordable housing. There's a statutory reference in Connecticut, it might be an eight thirty G application or something like that. And they looked at neighborhoods where these types of projects were infilled, and over a period of ten years, looked at the impact on the property values of homes in the immediate area, and they found that, in fact, it had no negative impact whatsoever. So that information is here as well, and you can look at, you know, the truth is that building three and four-bedroom houses brings children to the town, not building one and two bedrooms. And you can look at, from the Rutgers study, that, that information. So what you heard tonight, sixteen to fifty-three, I think, based upon the empirical studies that have been done by major universities, is probably a somewhat high number. But, you know, there's going to be fifty-three two-bedroom units, and so the decision here was to say, most likely, or there could be, you know, up to one child in each of those, you know, probably not more, and certainly probably less, based upon the empirical data. So I also attached, in, you know, in the file is the entire forward-thinking report you guys have done every year the town does, projections for, assume the Board of Education engages, and it sounds like they've engaged the same gentleman for the last thirty or forty years. And you can read that at your leisure, but it essentially says that your school-age population is declining. So, you know, no matter how many children come into this product, there certainly is room. It's not going to overcrowd your schools. And the last page, while we were discussing with this board the different opportunities for, you know, what this, this project might look like, or how it might be advanced under the zoning regulations, some of the other types of zoning you have, we looked at the differences in density between those types of projects and what we're asking for. So you have a section in your regulations, section four dash forty-three, which is called Housing for the Elderly, and that's, the allowed maximum density is fifteen units an acre. You have another section called Multifamily Housing Developments in the MFHD Zone, and that is the max allowed at ten units an acre. The other sort of multifamily housing regulation is called the Large Flexible Residential Housing Zone, and that's sixteen units an acre. So by comparison, we are lower than all of these, but certainly much lower than housing for the elderly and the capacity or density of the large flexible residential housing. So I think what we're asking you to do under your regulations is to take a look at this information. I think there's certainly evidence to support this zone change, and what's required under your regulations, if you were to approve this zone change, would be during this process to set the maximum density, which we'd, like, set at that nine point, nine point three number. That's what we're looking for. And then that would allow us to go back and actually, we have a pretty good idea of what could fit in, with a nine point three, and where it would go, but certainly putting, you know, pen to paper and actually designing buildings, you know, we would do that in the future and come back to you and show you that as part of the second part of this review. So tonight, we're asking for a zone change and for you to set a maximum density. So we're here to answer any questions you might have, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Very nice presentation. Thank you very much. Before we...
Sister Nancy, yeah?
Sure. Go ahead.
I just have, you know, as I mentioned earlier, doing nothing is not a viable option, and doing nothing does not allow us to continue to meet the needs of the present times we live in. Doing nothing on the campus risks overall deterioration of this beautiful campus. The buildings will deteriorate, and nearby property values may be negatively impacted. This project that we are proposing would sustain the campus and increase the viability of the current ministries on the campus. This project would help to meet the current housing needs of the Enfield community, and this project would allow the legacy of the Felician presence to live on in the Enfield community and to make Enfield a better place. As one of our sisters wrote, "Do not fear change. We cannot be afraid of change. We may feel very secure in the pond we are in, but if we never venture out of it, we will never know there is, that there is such a thing as an ocean. Holding on to something that is good for us now may be the very reason why we don't have something better." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sure some commissioners have some questions, but I just want to mention when, again, unless I'm on a different plant, this is not a site plan review at this point in time. So this is about the zone change, and the site plan can change. We might have some, you know, particular questions, but again, it's not a site plan review. That was just more of an overview. A lot of those plans can change if, if the zone was, change was granted. So I just wanted to remind everybody that. Having said that, is there anyone that has any questions for applicants? Commissioner DeGrae?
Yeah, I have several questions. One of them was in your narrative. You're saying that there's a shortage in Enfield of ten thousand housing units. Enfield only has seventeen to eighteen thousand housing units currently, so I don't know where that ten thousand came from. So I'd like that answered. Another thing that you're, and this is to the staff, to the chair, the map, the zoning map that you included with this site change showed the whole property going into the special design district. So I'm a little confused. Would the Orrin Thompson Mansion still stay in the historical district if we make this change? Another thing, as part of the special design district, one of the criterias is that eighty percent of the buildings, not building, buildings on the property have to be vacant. That's one of our criterias, and that's in five point six zero point one C. So I need, I was wondering if we know what the total occupancy is of all of the buildings on that property? And Sister Nancy said, you know, things change, and we know things change. And there's only twenty-four sisters currently. And there's only 24 sisters currently living on the property, and if things change, and in the past, we were told at another hearing, that, you know, the Felician sisters' population is dwindling. And, yes, you have a 99-year lease, but what happens to the property if, within the next 10 years, you just, the Felician sisters do decide to sell the property, and the new owner comes in and says, "I don't like any of these buildings, we can take them down." That's a concern that I have, so, I know you're, you know, you're doing the long term, and also, would buildings have to conform to the King Street, Enfield Street, Design District overlay? So, those are some of my concerns, so, that's it. So, if I get answers, you don't need to have them tonight.
We don't need to have the answers tonight.
Okay.
Because, quite honestly, you know, be quite frank with everyone, we're going to be leaving this public hearing open, we won't be closing it tonight yet, absolutely. So, we have some questions, you can get back to us at the next meeting with somebody to answer. If you know the answers, that's great, if not, we can wait till the next meeting, you know, it's not an issue.
So, the one thing I'll say, Commissioner DeGray, is that the historic district boundaries, we have no control over them, nor do you. That's sort of an overlay district, so, that will remain until the historic district commission decides otherwise. And so, we, you can see by that map and the yellow line, that's the Orrin Thompson house is, you know, sort of a car out, that was intentional, obviously.
I understand, but in the map that we were given, in our packet, it, that doesn't, no, no, in our packet, it shows it as the whole property becomes the design district.
That's correct.
That's why I'm concerned.
Yes, the historic district overlay will remain.
Okay.
We have no intention of designing or building anything in that area. And since you asked a question, I think it's a great question, because staff approached us as well, should I be using the microphone? I think I have a loud enough voice, but...
Yes, please.
Yes.
I was growing up, I had a loud enough voice, but, so, I had a situation very similar to this in Suffield, where I represented the zoning commission, and it had a piece of property that was residential like this, and it decided, for reasons I won't go into, to change the rear of the parcel to an industrial zone, and leave the frontage in a residential zone. So, it was zoned in, the land became two different zones, and that was done without concurrence of the owner, and the appellate court said that that was inappropriate, essentially, to do that. Now, there were some fact-specific instances in Suffield that don't apply here, but until I, you know, so my advice to my clients was, let's leave it the way it is for now, and if we can figure out some way to carve out, and maybe leave it in the RH 33, or do something else, we're discussing that. So, it's possible that that may happen in the future, but for right now, we are proposing that the entire 26 acres be rezoned, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Holinsky?
Yeah, I have some questions about the relationship between, I'm sorry, forgot to turn my mic on. I had some questions about the relationship between the management company and the Felician Management company is, apparently, according to this proposal, is going to be in charge of managing the buildings, the residents who occupy the buildings, you know, acceptance of the residents, so on and so forth. Is that true? The Felician Sisters will not have any oversight of that, per se, as far as management, selection, maintenance, all that kind of stuff?
So, the Felicians continue to have oversight over the whole property, community builders will manage the day-to-day operations of that site, but there is a partnership between the Felician Sisters and the community builders that ensures how, you know, sort of how the overall site is being managed, and how those decisions are made. So, for this particular project, the Felician Sisters continue to have that, they're the owners, they have the sort of final say over the property, but the day-to-day operations is overseen by the community builders. This is sort of, you know, what our model is, in terms of ownership and property management.
Okay. I noticed you manage many properties, your company's a fairly large company, and the properties I've seen are in various areas, in very diverse areas as well, okay? Where would you classify on the spectrum of areas, where would you classify this particular development? I looked at two developments on your website, I looked at Dutch Point in Hartford, okay, which has been a long-term, low-income-type housing development, and has been significantly refurbished over the last several years. And I also looked at a unit in Chatham, Mass, Lakeside, I think it's called, Lakeview, something like that, and they were, the difference between the two was significant, as far as, one is large apartment buildings, you know, inner-city-type boundary type of thing. The other one, I couldn't tell exactly in Chatham where exactly it was in relation to where I know Chatham, but it seemed to be much more residential, much more open, okay? So, you effectively manage both types of properties, correct?
Yeah, so, when we are developing housing, we're developing it to the community that we're in. So, you asked, you know, how would we classify this? This is not Boston, right? Like, this is not Chicago, this is a suburban community that has a very established character and feel in the community, and so, you know, when you're looking at the examples of the types of developments that we've done, you're going to see there's a lot of different types of physical structures and buildings. The example we use around here, just because it's the most geographically close and sort of a similar plan, is the North Hampton State Hospital that was converted into a mix of affordable housing, single-family homes, cooperative housing, you know, within that community, you're seeing all sorts of building design types that fit with, you know, the North Hampton community, slightly suburban, a little bit urban. In this community, when we first proposed the plan, we had much more of, sort of a suburban model, where we were looking at, you know, smaller buildings, more buildings, but smaller townhouse to try and mirror what was on South Road. The feedback that we got was to sort of reduce that down and concentrate it, so, you'll see in this plan, we're really trying to mirror the existing buildings that are there. One of the design goals that the sisters had brought up early on was really trying to create a continuous language of design across the property, and I'm sure Miles can speak to this better than I can, but, so, you'll see in sort of that plan, like, trying to respond to that. We haven't gotten into the design specifics, but that will be part of, sort of, the site plan, is really looking at, okay, so how would the future designs in these buildings actually look like they belong on this campus?
Okay. And how about the application process by the residents, and the screening, and that type of thing? What type of things do you do there?
Yeah, so, as a, you know, a full suite property management service, especially one that we manage everything from low-income housing all the way up to market-rate housing. What we're talking about here is really sort of workforce housing, really in between that. Every property has a rigorous screening process, so applicants need to apply, they have to go through a background check, they have to go through references, they have to have their incomes verified, to make sure that, A, you know, not only are they not making too much money to qualify for a unit, but also can afford to live in that unit, because, you know, our goal is to have stable properties. We want people to be able to live there, and to have a life there, and build a community there. We also have our resident services program, which is our community life program, so we have onsite staff that are working with community members to make sure that they have access to all sorts of resources. I think the best example is with our senior housing that we provide, our community life managers are working on everything from how to make sure our seniors are not suffering from isolation, and that they're engaged with each other, they have access to health care, and financial stability, and are sort of connected to that. So, both, sorry, that was a little bit of a tangent, but the screening process, not only are we doing that before an applicant moves in, but there are ongoing inspections that happen on an annual basis, and part of that, and actually, I think Commissioner DeGray, you brought this up when we first met with you, is this type of housing development, there's a lot of regulations, there's a lot of different funders that become a part of it, and so, there's a lot of oversight that happens. So, the way that this housing gets built now is really focused on making sure there's housing stability, so that you have long-term residents that are there, and ensuring that the community is a safe and thriving place. And I think, sort of, our large, you know, scale of an organization we are, and our track record speaks to the fact that we've done that well in communities, which is what allows us to sort of continue to do this elsewhere.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No, we have, we have an option at this point. We do have a lot of residents, I believe, that want to speak. Do you want to continue to ask the applicants? We can always come back and ask the applicant questions afterwards, and the residents speak, or do you want to allow the residents to speak, because it is quarter after nine? I'm looking to see for consensus.
Mr. Chair, that's your prerogative.
I think, I think I would like to get to the point where the applicants can speak, and then, I know we're going to have additional questions for you, certainly after the applicant speaks.
I do have questions, yeah.
Yeah, I do too. I do too, not highlighted. So, if that's okay with you?
Go sit back down.
Yes, please. Yeah. Just give us a couple minutes, and we're going to start with the applicants who want to comment on the application. Thank you, applicants, for agreeing to do that, do appreciate it, thank you very much. Thank you, Lori. As soon as Commissioner Lamel comes back from the trip he just had to make, we will start with the first speaker.
Thanks for stopping him with the P O C D.
Yeah. No, because we haven't adopted it. You guys even haven't received it. Thank you. Don't mean to be rude, but we're going to start with the public comment now. So, the first person to sign up to speak is Nikki Price. Could you just identify yourself for the record, your name and address, and I think, pretty sure the mic's probably left on, you might want to drop.
Is it? Yes.
Yeah, bring it as far to you as best you can. Thank you.
I'm going to state my comments that I prepared, and then I have a commission, I have a question, not to be answered, but from your questions to the applicant, I know.
Before we start, I just want to let everybody know, you have five minutes to speak, and we'll allow, after everyone is done, for you to come up a second time.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, my name is Nikki Price, and I reside at 1324 Enfield Street. My comments are directed to the zone change application requested by the Felician Sisters for 1297 Enfield Street. As we meet here tonight, I believe we all can agree, the Felician Sisters have been great stewards of this campus community. However, we cannot allow our admiration to cloud the decision as to the impact this zone change, if approved, will have on the local neighborhood. Let us be clear, we are here because of the dwindling numbers of the sisterhood, cannot support the maintenance of the Felician campus. This dilemma was not created by society, rather, it's a byproduct of the Catholic Church by not reforming, modernizing the doctrine of religious life to attract young contemporary women to their ministry. It makes one wonder if their enrollment was substantial with this transformation have been proposed. What this zone change will do is to create a steady revenue stream for the Felician Sisters of North America, with substantial benefit for them at a tremendous loss, not only to the neighboring community, but the town as well. The bottom line is the Felician Sisters cannot guarantee 100% the property will be indefinitely in their possession. The Felician Sisters of North America can decide to sell the property at any time in the future. What effect would that have on the rezoned campus and the Felician Sisters' partners? How can this commission approve a permanent zone change to a property with such a big unknown? Once this zone change is approved, it is there forever for any future changes to the property by anyone who owns it. Now, as you were asking your questions, I brought up their little sheet that they have on the website. Now, I'm confused, it says Felician Sisters of North America, continued property and land over. Then it says the community builders, developer and building owner. So, all those new buildings are going to be owned by the community builders, not the Felician Sisters? I think that's a question that the zoning board needs to ask. Thank you for allowing me to my viewpoint, and I appreciate it.
No problem, thank you very much. Ron, Ron Army, I just saw Ron sit down, you could have been standing there, Ron, you're up next.
Hi, Ron Army, 30 Field Road, Enfield, Connecticut. I really don't have a dog in the fight, but I am a resident of Enfield, and I was reading the paper, I was concerned about a number of things. The first thing I was concerned about was the taxes, I heard the lady say they were going to pay taxes, but I didn't hear her say how much. Can you tell me how much?
No, can't do that, Ron.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It's all right.
All right.
We got your question, Ron.
All right, all right, that was just, okay, now, the historic district, I guess, has been covered, and then, my other, another concern I have is, and maybe this has been covered, has been the precedent. You know, they did, he mentioned that home, so, that's perhaps also been covered. One of the questions I have is this, what is the Enfield community? Does it stop at the town lines? I mean, the attorney that was sitting there said that the kids would have a limited effect on the schools. If, in fact, the Enfield community stops at the town lines, the kids will have no effect, because these kids are currently living in town, so they just would be living there. Is that, is that a correct assumption? But he kind of acted like this community, Enfield community, might be any way you can find a resident, which is an entirely different thing. I called the Board of Education today, educate a kid in Enfield right now, it's $15,942. That's what they call per pupil cost. So, you know, I, and he'll tell you, when a, you know, a small house comes to town, it doesn't pay for the kids, and he's right. I'm paying for the kids right now, but at one time, somebody paid for mine. And so, I was concerned about that, I found that to be a big concern, as to where that was. I was also wondering, you know, hearing everybody talk back and forth, would there be some kind of committee set up so that Enfield does have a dog in the fight? You know, you're talking about she's, they're going to check everybody, and they're going to make sure that everybody's perfect, but who do you call there when things go bad? Do you call her? She's project manager, but I don't know if she's the one you're going to call when you're getting a complaint. It's going to be like the Housing for the Elderly down here by JFK, et cetera, you know, you read about this guy's calling, that guy's calling. How soon do you get a return on these people? Everything like that, just things that should really be... Everything like that, just things that should really be considered. And, you know, I personally, I would like to see some type of committee set up so that you can, you know, like you're doing a Board of Health, you said doing this one and that one, and I think that would be something else.
Ron, I'm sorry, Ron, your five, your five minutes is up.
Yes, sir, okay.
You can come back, if you want.
No, I, that's enough talking.
You can come back. Thank you. James Glister?
Thank you. James Glister, 19 Post Office Road. I am here with mixed feelings. I was an altar boy in the 50s at the original convent, the old chapel attached to the Thompson, the Thompson Mansion, and I was there when they opened the beautiful new chapel. And as a matter of fact, I think I had a great, great aunt who was a Felician nun who taught in New Jersey and possibly Pennsylvania, and then she retired to Enfield. But anyway, so, my statement, I'm commenting to object to the requested change in zoning for 1297 Enfield Street, the Felician sisters' property to a special development district. The SDD zoning residential retail and office is too broad a brush to paint over this parcel. Retail and office use would entirely change the scope of this change, which has been presented as residential. If this broad zoning change is approved, there may not be any way to prevent future uses beyond the context of this proposal. Excuse me, this proposal. Secondly, my property is located at the southeast corner of the property owned by the Little Sisters of the Poor and occupied by St. Joseph's residents. Since my property is about 525 feet from the boundary of the project, I am 25 feet away from being considered an abutter, as are all the houses on Post Office Road between Enfield Street and I-91. Yet, in this narrative, the applicant is using PTR precision technologies and storage technologies as examples of nearby uses, even though they are on the east side of I-91. This is very deceptive, since the subject property cannot even be seen from them, while I can see it from my yard. They also state that there are multifamily dwellings in the area, but I don't believe there are more than two or possibly three, I thought three family, but apparently there's a four-family dwellings. Nothing like apartment blocks. This is also deceptive. Another problem with the development of this scope is water runoff. I understand there's a wetlands and water course commission that will have their own hearings, but is, by the change in zoning, you open this kind of development with the additional impermeable surfaces of pavement and roofs, the runoff situation will be devastating. Water already submerges the four or five-foot culvert under I-91, and when I inquired about it to a state of Connecticut engineer, she said that the town Enfield has not left anywhere for the water to go with the development along Phoenix Avenue. Another problem is that the retention basin and waterways, or ditches, along I-91 and Phoenix Avenue are not maintained and choked with cattails and fragmites, and are nearly useless. I used to be able to plow a garden behind my house on Post Office Road, but have given up because a tractor gets stuck. The other concern I have is that the Felician Sisters of North America would become a property management business instead of following the educational vocation that they held for decades. Yes, matter of fact, my sister graduated from Our Lady Angels Academy and became a physician, so their educational vocation was very, very good. I would have no objection to having the existing buildings converted to over 55 housing with addition of necessary outbuildings. Therefore, if I am correct, I believe that multifamily housing district zoning designation would be more appropriate. Now, I'm, I don't know all the technicalities of something like this, so I could, so my opinions could be incorrect, but also, I'd like to, I noticed this motion to approve PH 3040 MA, and it says here, members shall state the reasons for the decision on the record. Findings should be made based on the statements below. Second bullet point is the proposal exhibits compatibility with the character and density of land use abutting the site with similar uses and densities. So I'd like you all to keep that in mind when you're voting. That's all I have. Does anybody want to copy this?
You can leave it with Lori, if you don't mind. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Glister. You can leave that with Lori. Copy.
My name is Bob Emmerich. I live on 16 Post Office Road, and I want to talk a little bit about, one of the criteria of approving the new zoning, your Regulation E, the proposal will provide substantial benefit to the town and immediate neighborhood. I'm not understanding how any of that is going to affect any of, anything I'm doing in my neighborhood. It's going to put more, more of a problem to my neighborhood than, I think, anything else. I, I also want to talk about, when I read the first page of the applicant traffic report, and they use that in 2016 volumes, from the monastery school, which was done six years ago, then they calculate, calculated the data forward, then redistributed it to different driveways in a property which, in mine, makes it look like they're not using actual data. Anyone that lives in this area knows the amount of traffic that there is. Now, I've been living here almost 30 years, and when I moved into this house, the traffic was mild. This is one of the reasons why I moved into that area. It was one of the quiet areas left in Enfield, and this is one of my problems I'm having with what's going on now. And I also want to talk about, they were talking about Enfield Street and South Road. I hear a lot about Enfield Street and South Road. I don't hear anything about Post Office Road. They're keeping the vision away from what's going on for Enfield Street and South Road. But if I'm sitting on my front porch, I'm looking right into a driveway. My driveway almost could slide right into a driveway. I could walk right across. You know, so I'm concerned with what they're doing over there, because it is going to have an effect on everybody on Post Office Road, not just my area, but everybody on Post Office Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. John Malinowski?
Thank you. Hey, John Malinowski, 1302 Bigelow Commons. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposal. I was taught by the Felician sisters at Sainted Albert's and graduated in 1967. I'm a 1971 graduate of Enfield High School, and a Central Connecticut State University graduate, where I majored in English. I enjoy writing, and my comments may have a creative theme. At Bigelow, each building is named after a carpet that was manufactured there. My building is named Tapestry. A tapestry is created by weaving colored weft threads through plain warp threads. I'll tie this in soon. The development of the campus will preserve the sisters' legacy and help to continue serving the community. Life is full of change. By permitting the zone change, the sisters can repurpose existing buildings and also create affordable housing. The sisters want to therefore weave a new tapestry on their campus. Although unrelated to this proposal, I can relate many changes that have happened in my lifetime in Enfield. Sainted Albert's was a Catholic grammar school, is now filled with apartments. Enfield High School was updated, modernized, and expanded to create a new centralized and combined high school. The Felician sisters must make changes to the campus to accomplish their goals. Buildings don't last forever, and they will deteriorate if nothing is done. The partnership with the community builders is an honorable partnership. The sisters' legacy and reputation is unquestioned, and the community builders have built successful communities for 50 years. Diversity will be a strength in the new community. Intergenerational residents will come from Enfield and also other towns. This brings opportunity to those who may not be able to find safe and affordable housing. Enfield can be looked to as a leader in this area. Enfield needs to be a welcoming community where our door should be open. So please, let this change happen. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Lorraine Creedon?
Hi, I'm Lorraine Creedon, 57 Codat Road. I have been before planning and zoning several times. Last August, I was here to address the accessory dwelling units, which the Planning and Zoning Board opted out of, and I didn't have any problems with that, especially as the board said to me, there are large projects coming forward. And lo and behold, shortly after that, the Felician sisters come forward with a large project for affordable housing, for our seniors and for our young couples in this community. So I am hoping that you will indeed approve this change so that they can put these units forward. It's important that our people who have lived here their whole lives, like myself, getting older, if I want to move from my home because I can't take care of it anymore, that I have a nice area to go to, a nice apartment with, with a community that's going to care for me, like the Felician sisters. And also, young adults need an affordable apartment to get their start. You can't just build $2,000 apartments, where their rent is $2,000, and have young, new, young people who are coming out of schools in Enfield and have a place to live. So you need them to have a nice place to live, so that they will want to stay in our community, raise their children here, and move on to buy single-family homes, go to our stores and shop, and pay taxes in our community. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a beautiful campus, and I think it's a great project to have in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Ellen Martin?
Ellen Martin, 6 Patricia Circle in Enfield. I travel up Enfield Street on my way to work two or three times a day, two or three times a week, and I started noticing a couple of no-vote signs, didn't see anything else associated with it. Couple days later, I see more signs, and then I realized it was probably the Felician sisters, drove past the Felician sisters very slowly, and saw the small, little, subject to public hearing. And I was glad, thank you to the abutters for putting up your signs, because I kind of missed the small one that the town put up. So I want to thank them. The Felician sisters are looking for a zone change for a special development district. In the town of Enfield, from what I saw on the zoning maps online, and I don't know if the attorney for the other party is correct or not, I only saw two areas that had that designation. Bigelow Carpets and where Bernie's Warehouse used to be off Enfield Street. I didn't know anything about Bleair Manor. So there's only two of those areas, and both of those areas are business-related. Special requirements for the special development district, they have criteria, and I think before you go any farther, as a board, as a commission, you need to be able to look at the criteria that is written in our zone regulations to make sure that they will be able to proceed. The sole purpose of a special development district is to enable the rehabilitation of and reuse for vacant, deteriorated, and underutilized buildings and their sites. And they have to have, for that to happen, they have to meet certain criteria. The first one I think they meet, existing buildings containing a gross floor area of 10,000 square feet or more. It has B, enough land acreage of five acres or more. C is what I have question about, and that the buildings have a vacancy rate of 80% or more for a continuous period of 24 months, immediately preceding the date of application. In all the paperwork that I've seen online, I have seen no information about the vacancy rates, no information whether or not they meet that criterion. So I would ask the board to make sure you get that information and that detail before you proceed, because it has to meet all of the following criteria according to the town's zoning regs. The substantial inability to develop the project under provisions of any other zoning district. Not too sure about that one, because I really haven't looked at all the other zoning districts around. The proposal to provide a substantial benefit to the town and the immediate neighborhoods. Seeing all those signs on Route 5, South Road, and other places in town tells me the answer to that question. The proposal exhibits compatibility with the character and density of land. Now that they've made changes, I'd have to go relook at that. The proposal maintains compatibility with the zoning districts adjacent to the sites. That I'm not too clear on either, and I'm not too sure. And the proposal is compatible with the town plan of conservation and development. And I don't believe it does, but that's up to the zoning board, you, to make that determination. I am not sure of it meeting all the criterion, but that would be the place to start, to make a determination whether or not you should go ahead and grant this zone change, because once you grant this zone change to that land, that follows the land. And if, God forbid, something happens where the sisters have to sell that land at one point or another, or within that 99-year span, we're stuck with that designation. So I would ask the zoning board, the one takeaway that I want to leave you with, make sure we're meeting the criteria of the zoning regulations that you're here to enforce. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Vicki Mitchell? Does Stephen want to join you at the same time?
Oh, it's up to him. I'll probably just talk over him in that case. I'm Vicki Mitchell. This is my husband, Steve. We've lived in Enfield for over 35 years at 7 East Forest Drive. I don't have anything much to say, other than, obviously, it's one of the nicest properties in town, along with the adjacent Little Sisters of the Poor property. A lot of the magazines that I read, and I'm sort of a magazine junkie, where they talk about, some of the most desirable towns across the country are towns that have multi-generational developments, where they put children with senior citizens, and they each benefit from that relationship. So I think that would be a big plus, if that's something we could bring to that area, certainly. I trust the sisters and the development team that they've put together to do a good job to follow through on everything that they said they're going to follow through on. I certainly don't think that you can blame the sisters for a declining number of sisters, because that is a problem nationwide, across all religions. So I don't think that's relevant at all. But, so, I would be in favor of the change as they're suggesting. I think it would be a nice use of the property. There's a waiting list for the senior housing, so obviously, there's a need for more senior housing. We have a son who's 27, college degree, works his butt off, he happens to live in Colorado now, and he's just one of the many people of that generation who cannot afford a decent place to live, and he's making, you know, in that range, like $70,000. He has to pay $1,700 a month in rent, and he can't put anything aside to save. So that would be a really good thing for our younger generation to be able to live in affordable housing until they save up and maybe purchase a in affordable housing until they save up and maybe purchase another property somewhere down the line. Thank you. Your turn.
Steve, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
Okay. I will. I didn't want to tear the microphone out of the thing. So I'm Stephen Mitchell. I also live at 7 East Forest Drive. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments tonight. I am in favor of this zone change. I think it is a well-thought-out zone change, and it will provide a spectrum of housing for the town of Enfield. When we moved here in 1983, we were impressed in Enfield at the fact that there was housing of a variety of different types, from people that could afford smaller units to larger houses. And that spectrum is still somewhat here, but it is diminishing. People at the lower end of the spectrum are starting to have difficulties finding a place to live. And I think this will help expand and look at that lower end and focus on that. And I do, as my wife just said, I do also trust that the Sisters with this plan are going to do this. They're not just in this as a developer, it's for the money. They are in this to create a viable plan for the town in the future. I also would like to mention, I am a professional engineer. I have been practicing engineering for 45 years, primarily in land development. And that is what I have been doing throughout Connecticut for a very long time. And this type of development is the way we are seeing things going these days, with a mixture of development that is generational and that can provide an expansive housing. I don't, I very, very quickly reviewed the traffic information that was provided. It seems to have been done completely correctly, according to current standards. Somebody mentioned the fact that it was older traffic counts. And as many of you know, traffic engineers are having a problem now because of the COVID issues. We are having to go back to pre-COVID counts and project them forward. So that is the standard that is being used today. So that wasn't something that was done incorrectly, as was intimated earlier. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I know it's a long evening, but I fully support this change in zoning.
Thank you. Thank you, Mitchell. Thank you very much. Kelly Hemler?
Kelly Hemler, 10 Hartford Ave. I am not in favor of the zoning change. A lot of the presentation was really all about the design of what the project was going to be and very little about the zoning change. So that concerns me. If the rehab would just be of the current buildings and put just senior housing, that would be wonderful, but adding more apartment buildings, I don't think is consistent with the neighborhood. Adding more units is going to add pressure to the current utilities and traffic, and I have a concern that as the project evolves with government grants, that everything could change. And so those are big concerns, and I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Longey? Would you mind if I took a drink of water here while you're talking?
Oh, no, go ahead. Actually, I am submitting a petition. One of the abutters is away out of town, and they asked to, they submitted the petition of the abutters this morning, but this is the 80 additional names that went along with it, that they don't count, but they're just saying that they're opposed to it. And so that is actually not positive feedback, so...
Right, so to get clear on that petition, we can't consider those as part of the supermajority because the hearing already started, but we'll take those names as people that are opposing it, I guess.
Yes, and it does say, though, just to clarify, I guess, the state statute does say "at" or "at" or "before" the hearing. It does say that, just...
Yeah, we were recommended it had to be at the beginning of the hearing, but we'll take those and see what the legal staff says.
Yes, that would be great, just because I did attach...
Yep, yep, I have it too.
Okay, all right. So now I can do my part of it.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Okay. I was a bit confused tonight because in the procedures for the application of the special development district, it said it must be made in accordance with both the change of zone and a site plan approval. So that was one question that I had when they were talking about, this is not about a site plan. Right here in the regulations, it says that they're supposed to be "and." So that would be something I would just look at. I sat on this zoning board for over eight years, volunteering my time, just like you. My father sat on this board in the late '60s and '70s. I really thought this would have come up already, but I know the Commission just didn't have time the last time before the application was withdrawn. We just don't apply things from the three main zoning districts into the other districts of the regulations. There are three districts of regulations: residential, business, and industrial. It's in our book, it's tabbed out. I don't know who came up with this very creative idea to take a section in the business section, 5.60, and just try to use it in the residential district. Simply explained, I can't build a mall in the residential district, I can't build a house in the business district, and I can't put a school in the industrial district. We clearly just don't do that. The SDD zone is in the business section of the book, and that's where the tables are for it. There's nothing about the SDD in the residential section of our regulations. It was created for business properties. As far as I knew, it was only used twice, for Bigelow Carpet Mills and the old Pace-Bernie's Warehouse, both of which were business. It was a very specific that it was in the business zone to use this special design district. The property has to be five acres. There was no mention of this SDD zone in either one of the industrial or the residential districts. The table is only in the business zone. I went the other day, and I went to look at our regulations book. I went all the way back to the '60s, and this is only in the business zone. I think I just heard that you may have gone and done one of these in error. We can't go back in time. However, going forward, we would have to comply with our regulations. And if you did this, there, where they said Blair Manor, it was not an intensive residential neighborhood like this property is. The big problem is the density of this zone. The density is too intense at 9.3. That's this one. I have something about the historic district, and then I'll come back if I'm at my time. If the property is removed from the historic district and becomes the SDD zone, the zone change makes it no longer part of the district because it's considered all one parcel. The entire parcel becomes SDD. So what's stopping? The demolishing of all the buildings. Basically, once the change is done, you can't go back. It's done. So do something that fits in the current zone that we're in. We don't want them to do nothing. We just want them to do something that fits in the zone, and we don't want a 9.3 density. And then I do have a couple other things, but I don't know how much time I have...
30 seconds. We didn't come back a second time.
Okay, because this is on traffic, so I'll get to that after.
No problem.
Thank you.
Tony Spazzerini?
Anthony Spazzerini, 40 Post Office Road. I'm sorry to have to be here tonight. I have lived in Enfield my whole life, and I have lived on Post Office Road for 60 of those years. I served on planning and zoning from the late '60s to the early '70s. There are very distinct zoning sections of the zoning regulations, the three, our residential, business, and industrial. It is not the intent of the regulations to be moving things from the different sections into other sections of the regulations. This SDD zone is in the business zone. It is simply not in the residential zone. It can't be used in the residential zone. Aside from the fact that the SDD zone simply doesn't apply to a residential district, the density in our residential zone is 1.25 per acre. The applicant has proposed a 9.3 per acre. That is eight times more. How is that a benefit to the immediate neighborhood? How is it that a compatible density for everyone abutting this site? It's not compatible. I'm 83 years old, and I don't think I have ever come before this Board to oppose anything in this town. This application is not good for our town, it's not good for the neighborhood, it's not good for the Sisters, and it's not good for the Little Sisters property abutting this site next door. I can't believe that this application even got this far. I am here tonight because I am not in favor of this zone change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think they want to come together, but Bob and Teresa Crisotelli, you guys want to come together? You don't have to if you don't want, it's up to you.
We're Bob and Teresa Crisotelli.
You need to pull the mic a little closer. It's okay, it's all right.
We live at 1336 Enfield Street, and we are against, for it to be rezoned. It will, the change would affect traffic on South Road, Enfield Street, and Post Office Road, and those roads will take the brunt of it. The increase in vehicles will not be limited to just passenger cars, but will include delivery vans. Because of the population increase, there will be need to be more traffic of emergency responders, police, fire, and ambulance. When those services need to be expanded, I see no benefit to the immediate neighborhood or the town. Along with the increase in population in our neighborhood, there will be a higher demand on our aging sewer system. Should it fail, how is this a benefit to the immediate neighborhood or town? I am opposed to the zone change.
Thank you.
And I'm Bob Crisotelli, and what she said. But of a major concern is the fact that this zone change stays with the property. And while we try to get assurances that the Felician Sisters will maintain this property or retain this property, I should say, there's no one in this building that can guarantee that's going to happen. And if this property is sold, then we have no idea what's going to happen. We live directly across it. It's a beautiful property. We'd love to see it stay that way. If the change was to increase senior housing and nothing more, that could be accomplished without a zone change and still be a benefit to the Sisters. This feels more like a commercial enterprise than it does something to help the Sisters with their ministry.
And we are both Catholic, so...
Okay, okay.
We understand what they want to, they want to do good, but I don't think it's a good thing for our town.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher this last name. I apologize. Mary Ellen Deluzio?
That was good. That was perfect.
I got lucky. I think I need to pull the mic probably closer to you.
Thank you, council members, for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. The presentation by the Felician Sisters...
We need your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary Ellen Deluzio, 1330 Enfield Street.
Thank you.
The presentation by the Felician Sisters and the Community Builders of Boston was compelling and aimed at tugging at your heartstrings and your interest in providing future housing for our town. I know you will give differing points of view the same consideration. This evening is not about affordable housing and elderly housing. Everyone in this room supports that. This evening's hearing is about whether or not 1297 Enfield Street is the appropriate location for this high-density housing project brought about by a major zoning change. As you know, drastic zoning changes from HR 33 to SDD is a serious matter. This application really has nothing to do with my support for the Felician Sisters or the mission of the Community Builders. I own 1330 Enfield Street along with my sister. I spent most of my first 35 years in Enfield. I attended OLA. My daughter attended the Enfield Montessori School. I willingly and thankfully worked very hard for EMS and, to this day, fully support the Felician mission. Therefore, my objection to the zoning change is not any personal disagreement with any organization. Having invested in our house, which was built in 1773, I love historic districts and consider it our civic duty to protect them. I currently live in a building built in 1880, and my business is located in a building built in 1900. I know full well the dedication it takes to care for these landmarks. I think you do, too. It is astonishing to me that a zoning change of this nature would be considered in the historic district of Enfield. This historic area has already been affected by the changes over the last 15 years. I ask you to try and remember the first time you ever saw Enfield Street, or perhaps the first time you stood on the green waiting to participate in a parade. It's a wonderful showpiece for our town, and it has to be protected. It has to be preserved. This proposal does not meet the criteria for SDD because it does not exhibit compatibility with the character and density of the abutting properties. Please note, Route 91 provides a major landmark of differentiation between the HR 33 housing and the commercial zoning on the east side of Route 91. The abutting properties are residential, along with the historic Congregational Church and the Old Town Hall. The proposal does not exhibit compatibility with zoning districts adjacent to the site, this being the historic district. This is so obvious. High-density zoning will directly affect the quality and integrity of the historic district. The studies presented here tonight by FSI were studies done in eastern Massachusetts, an area that is already very high-density, and we're not surrounded by a historic district or surrounding a school with young children's age, young-aged children. And again, the articles and comments from Connecticut Towns did not address this type of zoning in a historic district. The zoning change singles out the communing builders for special treatment in our area and in our town. Those of us who live in the historic district live under strict zoning rules. Why would our neighbors get special treatment? This type of reclassification and the manner of use will disturb the nature of the surrounding neighborhood by constructing buildings not in line with the historic buildings on the campus, and the obvious fact that they will be conducting business in a residential area, increased traffic and noise. The SDD will surround a primary school with leased land and multi-residential use and expose the area to high-density housing. This is not in line with the comprehensive plan and the Historic Cultural Resource Section, which lists as its goal to reduce density in the historic district. How is this in the interest of Enfield? Enfield is a town that has more affordable housing than its neighboring towns. By placing the historical section of Enfield Street abutting in SDD zoning is risk-changing one of the most prominent streets in town. As the Enfield zoning book states, your purpose and... I would also note, if I have some extra time, that the people who support this project are not property abutters. Thank you.
Thank you. Emery? Emery Gerini?
Galdenzi.
Oh, see, that's an L. See, I apologize. It's an L. I couldn't tell.
Hi, everyone. My name is Anne Marie Galdenzi. I live at 1330 Enfield Street, and I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today about this proposal for a change of zoning at the Felician sisters at 1297 Enfield Street. A bit of a background: My family has been involved with the Felician sisters for many years. Since my family moved to Enfield in the mid-'60s, I went to OLA kindergarten. My brother attended Montessori School. My mother was one of the assistants for many years. My sister and I both graduated from OLA High School. Her daughter attended Montessori, and my sister and my brother-in-law were very active in supporting and fundraising for the Montessori School. So it needs us to say the Felician sisters have been a very positive influence on my life for many years, and I'm very appreciative of their beliefs and teachings. But I'd like to bring a few points up, since I live right across the street from the Felician -- this area that's in question. I would like to point out and bring to your attention that the proposal must meet those conditions in the criteria A through H. Underline H, it states, "The proposal is compatible with the town's plans of conservation and development." The applicant states that they meet the desired residential use. I'd like to bring to your attention, "The proposed zoning change is an increase in the density of residential neighborhood," which is a direct conflict with the current plan of conservation, Chapter 9 of the Historic and Cultural Resource Document. Reference page 85 under the Enfield section. That document states, "The middle section of Enfield Street is a historic district, and most of the plan's recommendations have been addressed. The accomplishment from 1992 to 1998 include reduction of residential zoning densities to maintain the character of the neighborhood and to limit traffic. I choose to live in this area, as it is a historic section of Enfield, containing residential housing that has low density. This proposal is building a different and its own community. This new proposal -- proposed community does not take, I feel, it does not take into consideration the historic community that already exists. The proposed community is completely different from the existing community. Those of us who have chose to live in this area because of what it offers and how it is maintained its historic feeling and spirit, I feel this multi-generational/income housing project will directly affect the value of my home and others around it. In addition, those of us already in this area are willing to bear the additional expense for maintaining a historic home or a home in the area. This is part of Enfield, a piece of American history that needs to be protected. We do not get a tax break or any type of consideration for any of the additional expenses incurred to maintain a home in this area. Our presence adds to the town's overall authenticity of its historic nature. Maintaining a historic culture, natural -- historic natural culture of Enfield Street significantly contributes to the positive culture and architecture of the town. Enfield Street is a Enfield jewel and should be protected. By increasing the density of traffic, it will directly affect the whole town of Enfield." I don't know how much more time I have left. Am I already done?
You have about a minute. You can come back a second time if you so desire.
Okay, there's one more thing, because I do live across the street. I didn't go into detail of the traffic report, but I am greatly affected by the traffic now because of the increase in the Enfield Street School, living on South Road, between South Road, Post Office Road, and now we have -- and the Woodgate apartment. If there's any kind of event at the school, it's bumper-to-bumper traffic outside my yard, my driveway. During certain times, it's bumper-to-bumper traffic, and God forbid if there's an accident 91, then it's really impossible. So, not that I don't believe these traffic reports, I don't think they really -- they're done by people that live there all, every day, like I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Dubinowski?
Hi, everybody. Donna Dubinowski, 23, Betty Road. First, I want to start out that I went to the Senior Center presentation and was asked to sign in. Now, nowhere did the community builders say that they would take that sign and shoot and use it online during their presentations. There were also photos taken that evening, and I'm just wondering where those photos are being used. It was very deceiving advertising, if you ask me, but making it like -- sorry. This was very deceiving advertising, making it like those of us who signed in at the Senior Center were for this, and that couldn't be any further from the truth. I can state clearly that I am not for the zone change and not in favor of -- for this apartment project. I feel that community builders using us Enfield residents in this way is a bad start to any type of community relations. Their entire presentation that night keeps claiming "community," but if you look at the number of abutters' signatures on the petition, clearly, the community is not behind this project. The major reason I'm against it is we're allowing in Enfield, we're allowing the Boston Company, Community Builders, to come in and compete for Enfield Housing Authority's money. This is direct competition for our Enfield Housing Authority. We, as a town, deserve that money to go without any competition directly to our Housing Authority and not some out-of-town builder. On November 10th, the 2021 Commission of Aging Minutes, Community Builders was asked about specific HUD programs and HUD tax credits that they would be using for this project. They didn't -- they asked what they would be using for this project. They didn't know because there were so many, and it's very complicated. It's not complicated at all. You want to know why? Because it's in direct competition with the Enfield Housing Authority, and for that reason alone, it should not move forward. My statement, along with the attachment of the Commission of Aging Minutes for November 10th, 2020, to be respectfully submitted for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to submit? Is there anyone who hasn't spoken for the first time, hasn't spoken at all? That, sir?
I'll speak from here, Riley.
No, you can't speak from there. You have to come up. Sorry.
I'm Angie Louder.
Sorry, I can't let you do that.
Well, that's okay. Because obviously, you didn't read my name earlier on the list.
Your name's not on the list, sir. I would have read it.
My name is Terry Lynch, and I signed a list that was here on the paper, on the table.
Oh, my gosh, you are absolutely right, Mr. Lynch.
I know I am right.
Just to show you how blind I'm getting.
And that's what I say. I talk loud enough usually, so people remember.
I do apologize, Mr. Lynch. Your face is right in front of me.
Now, I've heard two people before me say they sat where you people are now.
I need your address, Mr. Lynch. I'm sorry.
73 The Laurel's.
Thank you.
And I heard two people before me say that they sat where you are now. I also did that in the early '70s. Now, I'm against this project, not because of the Felician sisters or any of that. I think the Felician sisters do a heck of a job. I'm looking at two things. One is the density, but really, it's the change of the whole zone. You're changing part of our historic district into a community development district or whatever the three things are, and I think that's a sad thing for us to do. Secondly, in all their presentations, they have the playground for the Montessori School out on Enfield Street. Now, I don't know whether that fits in the historic district regulations or not, but I know that currently, the kids have to play out back, which is wonderful because it keeps them off the street anymore from the street. And with kids from the Montessori School playing out in front, that opens up, in my mind, a whole safety issue. You have cars that can drive up and down Enfield Street, and you're not roughly 50 yards, if that, from the street where the parking lot, where the playground went. And you get kids running around, young kids running around. That's not a very big space, and that concerns me a lot. The other thing that concerns me is the traffic on South Road. Now, I know they've said that they're going to block off the driveways out of Post Office Road. We'll see how that works out for everybody. But the traffic on South Road is going to be, in particular, at school opening and closing. You have cars lined up at 2:30 in the afternoon to pick up kids out there. You have cars lined up on South Road to get in and out of the front. You have a parking lot that I don't know whether it's going to stay for the school or it's going to be part of the senior citizens that is on South Road, that is full at 2:30 in the afternoon with people picking up their kids. What happens to that traffic? It may not impact a whole lot on South Road, but it will impact the traffic in and out at those times of day, and I think that's a concern. But my two reasons for really being in opposition is that the safety issue, I think, is important, and changing that whole thing into that special district is very important because it takes it out of the historic district. And so what else could go there? And that's my concern. But I am opposed to it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And I'm sorry for skipping over you. I apologize. And I took a look at the list to make sure I didn't skip over anybody else. I don't think I did. Is there anyone else hasn't spoken for the first time, please?
I'm Maureen Mullin of 1625 King Street, Enfield. And I wasn't going to be speaking tonight, but a question did come to me beyond many questions I had when I first came this evening, because so many people have covered the issues and all. I've known the Felicians since 1949, when I first went to instructions with them, and they set me off on my path. They've always been wonderful, wonderful people, and I thank God that they're in our community today and helping us out. I know it must be very, very difficult for them at this point to struggle with, "What are we going to do?" They have to do something, as Sister Nancy had said. I don't have all the answers. I have a lot of questions. I was listening, and I was hearing something about the community partners. We're going to be managing the facilities and renting and all that. And I thought, you know, if the Felicians were in charge of that, I'm suspecting that there would be more Enfield residents who would be considered as candidates for the senior housing and perhaps the multi-generational housing. I don't know what's going to happen if that does go to community partners. Maybe someone else can fill me in on that. I think that was all that I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who hasn't spoken for the first time that would like to? Seeing none, who'd like to speak for the second time? I think Lori was first up. Come on, Lori.
Lori Longy, 1427 Enfield Street. And I myself have not been here to speak against anything since I left this board. I would like to talk a little bit about parking and traffic. I went to one of the informational meetings, but you couldn't see the parking on the screen. You couldn't see it in your master packet. We all know that parking is going to be an issue. We all know that traffic is going to be a problem. They used .75 spaces for housing for the elderly, but in residential, you need two parking spots. And age-restricted, you need two parking spots. We have our townwide EMS rolling out ambulances day and night from that corner. We have four schools, and it seems like we all know about the traffic, but the applicant wants us to think that this old study is good enough. When we had Enfield High School application, we had many hearings. I have a file folder full of minutes from the Enfield High School application because there were so many issues about traffic. Some of you might remember this. When I sat on the board, I was so concerned about the safety of the kids at Enfield High, and I saw the need for a light back then. I had safety concerns then, and I still have them now. Fast forward to today. Everyone is talking about a need for a light because of the increased traffic. I stopped looking at the traffic report after I saw it was a 2016 data brought forward and then redistributed. Do you think that this is acceptable? I don't think so. We insisted on counts from the high school in all of the intersections and the streets that were affected by the new high school. We got very different information when we asked for the accidents from the police department versus the state database information. I sat on the board, and I remember this. But the statements in the report that took the cake for me was the fact that they went to the town of Enfield to identify any other pending or approved developments, and literally said no developments were identified. Yet, down the road, across the street from the high school, is the Enfield Housing Authority, and it's soon to be renovated. The complex is adding additional housing. No one seems to know about this. Not doing the traffic study while the school is in session and not getting actual data are the types of things that creates doubt and mistrust between the residents and the applicant. What are the actual levels of service of traffic with the current data? But now that school is out, we won't get that information, but it would have been nice to have a traffic report that I would have liked to have read with this information in it. And I will submit the highlighted sections because this is what the traffic report said. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for a second time? Yes. Mr. Malinowski, correct?
Thank you. John Malinowski, 1302 B. Bell of Commons. Sorry, but I'm going to give another emotional pill. I'll be very brief. We have an opportunity to create the gift of affordable housing and to provide a safe place where people can live. I find it interesting that it is somehow okay for seniors to live on this property, but not multi-generational families. Young people are the future of this community. If we attract them to this town, that's a great benefit to Enfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak for a second time? Yes. Mr. Malinowski, correct?
Thank you. John Malinowski, 1302 B. Bell of Commons. Sorry, but I'm going to give another emotional pill. I'll be very brief. We have an opportunity to create the gift of affordable housing and to provide a safe place where people can live. I find it interesting that it is somehow okay for seniors to live on this property, but not multi-generational families. Young people are the future of this community. If we attract them to this town, that's a great benefit to Enfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak for a second time? Anybody else like to speak for a second time?
Mary Ellen DeLuzio, 1330 Enfield Street. This letter has been requested to be read by myself and acknowledged in the minutes by the Planning Zoning Commission in the town of Enfield. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I am opposed to the zone change at 1297 Enfield Street to a special development district from the property's HR status. The revision addition of the Enfield Feliciane campus by the community builders and the Sisters has not changed significantly in its design plans. A matter of revisiting the language and numbers is nothing but semantics. And she refers to the previous proposals. As stated, the final development of this project is contingent on state and local policy and funding that will include the Enfield taxpayer. With a 99-year ground lease and a lot of speculation, it is difficult to quantify this preposterous inflated discourse. The master plan seems to equal 100% with no explanation of how new buildings will look, townhouse or duplex, et cetera, elderly units, separate dwellings, or similar to assisted living apartments. The option of "may include limited of market rate and unrestricted units." This, in my opinion, is discriminatory. There has been repetition of a term not used in the fall of 2021, intergenerational. Is this by appearance or design? Mixed income means many things, and $40,000 to $80,000 for income-restricted apartments, and these figures are provided by... Mission of redevelopment is to preserve the order of Feliciane Sisters at whose cost. I understand clearly the above segment of their mission, but with great dissatisfaction and the rhetoric every time meetings have been held last minute, and when a disputed point is made, no data can be provided, which disengages collaborative communication. This due diligence and planning and sharing that is emphasized is troublesome. The Feliciane Sisters and the community builders choose to feel only, to feel the only people impacted is a small section of South Road, minimal homeowners on Enfield Street, and now Post Office Road. No issues with its new road plan. Neglecting to realize these roads do provide alternative routes for Enfield residents, the traffic study provided is outdated and incomplete, which does not include 2022 data. I have read that there will be no impact regarding the tax base, safety, police department, fire department, town maintenance, or aged infrastructure, EMT services, Enfield Public School System, recreation sewer, supportive services, and the need of other more sensitive services if needed. The philosophical development, operational, buildings, parking, traffic, shared spaces, and outdoor spaces are simply stated goals. The short-term objectives are not clear, concise, nor specific, and imponation not mentioned. The impact has not even been clearly defined. There has been no mention, that I recall, regarding disabled individuals. The residents of Enfield are taxpayers. The Feliciane order is not. The TCB is not-for-profit. There is not an end in sight with the script presented that keeps changing with I's not dotted and T's not crossed. Has this commission even visited a few of the TCB sites? This is very complicated, large development venture, and it's unfortunate the Feliciane Sisters of North America have not secured and supported their property financially, and now their problem is impacting the town of Enfield to bear the brunt of their failure to do so. It is unfortunate that there are only a few supported events for the town of Enfield mentioned by the Feliciane Sisters. The Montessori School, St. Francis Residence, and three U. S. Frontage of Enfield Parade. I do not support this property's own change to an SDD. Sincerely, Sherry Rinaldi.
Thank you. Would you mind submitting that to Lori, please? Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for a second time? Did he speak for, he didn't speak for first time, did he?
I did not.
Excuse me, you didn't?
I did not speak the first time, but I was wondering if I could.
Yep, I guess I'm looking here. No objection from my fellow commissioners. We'll let you speak for first time. Go ahead.
My name is Norman Gagnon. 24 Fairfield Road, Enfield, Connecticut. I'm a City of Hartford DPW engineer, and I want to thank everybody on the board for your service. There's a few things. Me and my wife take care of the adoptive spot on the corner of Oliver Road and Enfield Street. And, thank you. And I was wondering why we're even here. In the City of Hartford, we have a lot of different diversity, a lot of things that we do and we end up doing again. But the zone change, I don't think, needs to be done from, you know, from what we're talking, because I think the Sisters have the ability to use the Heritage Clause. I think the Heritage Clause comes into this situation where, you know, they don't have to change the zoning in that area because they took on an abandoned building when they moved in. They were there before the basis of the zoning in Enfield started. So they're exempt and pretty much grandfathered into whatever they would like to do, and they're here because they want to do things the right way. Enfield, as a community, tends to choose extinction. Blair Manor, the Theater Downtown, look at them all, you know? We don't reinvent ourselves. Me and my wife have been here. My wife's been here more than 40 years. I've been here 30 years in the same address, and there's a lot that we miss, that we don't do, that in moving forward as a community. This is a project that should happen. I understand the impact that it's going to have. The impact is already there because of the schools that we have. The amount of traffic on Enfield Street has increased over the last 10 years significantly. South Road, same thing, you know? But like I said, I just wanted to put it out there that I don't even know why the Sisters are here. They should be able to do what they need to do on their property without a zone change. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to take care of one, we have to take, in the middle of this public hearing, we have to take care of one administrative item because we're getting close to the 11 o'clock time. Would someone please entertain a motion that we continue this meeting past 11 o'clock till midnight, please?
I move we continue the meeting.
Commissioner Holiski made a motion that we continue this meeting past the 11 o'clock timeframe, seconded by Commissioner Alamo. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The record show, Lori is unanimous, that we are going to extend this meeting past 11 o'clock. Okay, is there anyone else who hasn't, would like to speak for the second time? Anyone else? So we're still going to leave this public hearing open, because again, we have questions, as I said before, about the petition and about whether it's going to take four or five people to approve, so this is going to stay open. Would the applicant like to continue with questions tonight, or would you like to wait for the next meeting? It is 10:30. I'm going to, we're going to leave it up to you, what you guys would like to do at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Carl Landelina. I think what I would propose, I haven't really addressed this with my clients, but I think probably it's, given the hour, rather than taking questions from the commission and responding to what the, we heard from the public, we would probably have no objection to just continuing this to your next meeting. We're going to continue it no matter what, anyway.
Right.
So we're all getting a little tired, probably. The only comment I would make is having been involved in Enfield for many years, I actually was the first Assistant Town Attorney here in the town of Enfield, and sometimes from this level to get to the town attorney's office, there's a few steps that need to sometimes happen along the way. Ginny knows what I'm talking about. So I would request that you make a formal request through staff to have the town attorney look at the statutes that are in question regarding the, so that there's no, you know, because I've called out there many times, and they say, oh, you know, nobody asked us. So please ask them. And with that, we're fine for the rest of the evening.
Okay. I was going to do that, especially the question, Lori, if I may, about the second petition that came in after I actually started the meeting. We certainly know the petition that was here in front of us when we started is, needs to be verified, but that's a valid petition. We're not sure that the second one that Ms. Longy gave us can be accredited towards that same total, because it was given to us after we started the public hearing. So if Jim Talburt could take a look at that, we would appreciate that. We want to make sure we have all the I's dotted, the T's crossed, and doing right for everybody, either side. Having said that, we have other business to do. I'll entertain a motion to table this until the next meeting, please.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner D'Antonio to table.
If I may, would you state on the record the date and time of that?
Yes.
So you don't have to republish a notice?
Give us a second. I know the time will be seven, but I lost track of the date.
Maybe 5:00 next time. I know it's the 13th or the 14th.
14th, right, right.
Okay, that would be your right date.
July 14th.
Yes. So we're going to table this until approximately 7:00 PM on, after, you know, normal business there on July 14th.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner D'Antonio to table this until approximately 7:00 PM on July 14th. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. The record shows unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll give a couple seconds for the room to clear out. And thank you, everybody. This will be back on again in a couple weeks, on July 14th. We're taking a quick five-minute recess, Alex.[1305.65] Call the meeting back to order at 10, approximately 10:40. Moving on to new business, which is a request for an advisory report pursuant to CGS 8-24 regarding acceptance of a land donation to be used for parking to Hazardville Institute at 317 Avenue. Would staff like to start this off? I know, knowing everyone in the audience, I can see that we do have some interested participants. I can see them sitting here. You, and, please, come on up. You want to come on up and join us? Go ahead. Yeah, come on up.
So the town council had referred this to planning as an 8-30G. I'm sorry, wrong reference, 8-24 referral. So the Hazardville Institute has been, has been under renovations for some time now, and they really don't have any parking. So we were trying to find a solution to the parking issue, and the Susacs and, and the Pfeiffer Halls, I believe, have offered to donate some land so we could get to the back property where we already own property to provide a municipal parking lot. And I think--
Thank you.
--Commissioner Don are here, they'll have a much better story than I will.
So we know you're sitting here, please.
Donna Susak, 35 South Road. Gretchen Pfeiffer Hall, 4 Summers Road.
It's good to see both of you. Thank you. Yeah, we got the referral from the town council, from the, from Lori and the staff, and from the town manager. I think there was a question. Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Ginny?
First of all, I think it's a great project, and it's great that you want to donate the land. Lori, I have a question. Well, through the chair to Lori, I have a question. It's Zoned HV 33, which means it needs 33,000 square feet of property, correct?
They are all undersized lots.
I know, I know.
They're all nonconforming.
That's my concern. They have less than 33,000.
Right, but they're legally nonconforming.
Right, but that would make them more nonconforming if they give up the land.
Well, they will, this will actually make this lot most similar to the neighboring lots in size.
So you're saying it's okay for them to take land away from this?
I believe, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. That was my concern, so.
Because it's already a nonconforming lot. I mean, I guess, yes, it's making it less nonconforming, what it's going to make it.
I know, I know.
Nonconforming, nonconforming.
More nonconforming.
Sure, please, go ahead.
It actually makes it similar to the lots that we are next door to. This lot was particularly long, and it's, Ginny helped us actually when we did a change going from a business to, to residence. She was very helpful at the time. And right now, we did submit maps and everything to the town, and it does actually, the new property line would particularly line up with the next property over, which lines up with all the other ones, so it gives the town a nice square piece of land.
I just didn't want there to be a problem later on, so that's why I asked.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there any other question? Commissioner D'Antonio?
Just to clarify, I get that this is for the referral for the land donation.
Yes.
So the, the parking itself is going to come back to us.
Yes.
Do we have any estimation on, on timeframe for that? Just out of curiosity, when?
We've been at this for like, what, parking 12 years? Yeah, so it's, it's been a process. I mean, the town bought the old oil company, and they, when Matt Koppeler was here 15 years ago, he foreclosed on the parcel that's to the end of the property that we're, we're suggesting the donation of. So it has been, I mean, a long, a lot of work, too.
It's actually longer. We sort of had a proposal back when, who was it, Manchester? Scott, Scott Shanley was the town manager. We approached him way back then with, with a, with a concept to purchase the Connecticut Valley oil property, and there was another small parcel. So it's, it's been going on for a long time.
Lou remembers she was on the council.
I remember. It's been a long time.
Yes.
I mean, we actually rehabilitated the building, and we think it looks quite nice.
You guys did a nice job. I, I'm sure, I don't mind me sharing one of my historical stories, Frank, you don't mind, do you? I actually played basketball there upstairs, and we couldn't do jump shots because the roof was, the ceiling was so low. Everything was all layups.
Remember when it was the library?
That I don't remember. I remember Pickens Library, but I don't remember when that was a library.
Do you remember what it was, the library, the Hazardville Institute?
No, I'm old, but I'm not that old.
I don't know, but I had cheerleading practice.
Did you?
You know, this group is like, you know, this far away from being able to open that building.
Yeah.
And I think with, you know, other buildings being slated to be torn down, we don't want this one to fall into the category where its doors are almost open.
You guys have been at this for, for a long time, done a nice job with the building. I remember, I kind of remember when you started, way back when I was on the council, you started before it. That's come a long way. I know you're really close. I was hearing some things the other day. We were chatting, so hopefully the use of the building will come through. So, because I know, you guys put a lot of effort. You're in your group for a long time, a long time. So, Frank?
Yeah, so the referral says 10 Maple Street, and the agenda says 317 Hazard.
That's the, that's the Hazardville Institute address.
Right.
Right, I want to make sure that, so when we put this on the record, there's no confusion later.
Well, 10--
10 Maple Street's the land you guys are donating?
So--
North Maple.
It's actually 10 North Maple, but--
It is.
But the assessor's record calls it 10 Maple. It does that for everything on North Maple.
So I'm just saying, so since there's two different addresses, we'll make sure we get it correct in the minutes and everything, so anybody ever looks back.
So the address of the Hazardville Institute is 317 Hazard Avenue. The, the current, the property that we're looking to, to donate is, is a portion of 10 North Maple Street.
Okay.
It's, it's the rear portion.
So, that's right. So I wanted to make it clear what we're actually voting on here.
So basically--
Because we have two different addresses. We just got to be careful.
So the land donation is 10, is--
Well, it says to be used for parking--
Right, to be used for.
At Hazardville Institute at 317--
So are you going to merge it after? Is that what they're going to merge the lot, or?
There's actually--
No.
--three lots there.
So we got two different addresses. I just want to, it's happened before where I've seen this, and we've corrected it, just to be sure.
Well, it's going, it's not going to be a part of 317 Hazard Avenue.
It's not going to be.
It's, it's just going to be accessible to--
Right.
317 Hazard Avenue and, and other local businesses.
Okay.
The whole village, they're--
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, there is a need for parking.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. No, it's going to be great.
The subway plaza is--
Yeah, no, it's going to be great. So it's the referral we're going to be--
Yep.
Voting for this address on here.
Yeah, and we're basically, it's just a motion right here to P&amp;Z recommends town council, council accept donation of land to provide for safe ingress, egress to town property for development of a village parking lot that could accommodate parking for the Hazardville Institute. If you want, we can also put down Hazardville Village, 10 Maple Street.
10 North Maple.
Yeah.
No, they said, she said they recognized--
Oh, is that what it's on the card?
Right.
That's what the card says.
Yes, but 10 Maple didn't start until North Street.
Right, it doesn't, you're right. Karen's right.
Okay, whatever it says on the card, I guess.
Great.
Thank you.
I didn't know that either.
Just full disclosure that there will have to be site plan approvals and possible variances here, so.
I'm sorry, Lori.
Just full disclosure that, that ultimately there will be site plan approvals and possible variances, so.
No, that's great. Just so down the road, I have to come back again. You guys have been working hard on this, and just wanted to make sure this was all correct with the addresses. Thank you.
End of here. For the Hazardville Institute at 10 Maple Street.
Isn't there a Maple Street in Thompsonville?
AKA--
Yeah, also known as North Maple.
Okay.
Isn't there a Maple Street in Thompsonville?
There is, right?
We'll do that.
North Maple. Oh, Maple Avenue, okay.
Also known as 10 North Maple. Also, also known as 10 North Maple.
Okay.
All right.
All right, you ready?
The P&amp;Z recommends that the town council accept the donation of land to provide for safe ingress and egress to the town property for the development of a village parking lot that can accommodate parking for the Hazardville Institute, and the property is also known as 10 North Maple Street that's being donated.
Okay, does that sound good to everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
Let's do a roll call, please.
Lou Fiore.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Lynda DeGray, four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
Nick LaFicus.
Four.
So the motion was made by Secretary, Vice Chairman DeGray, and it was seconded by Commissioner Alamo, and then we had a vote. You're all set. Thank you very much, everybody.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I've been working on this since I start, just after I started. So it's been almost four years. Well, I've been working on it the least amount of time, but, but over my whole career here.
All right, we got a couple things.
Wow.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're on to no old business, other business. You want to give us an update on the Shaker Heights PH 2868-01? Lori?
Due to Public Act 2129, I don't believe that they need to seek an extension. So I was on vacation, and I didn't get a chance to read the final email from staff, but I believe that was our final decision.
So you're just going to go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, I'm going to put down like completed or whatever. Update on discussion on the where, just, I just say distribution centers. I know you sent it off to CROG. We going to be all set for a public hearing next meeting?
We should be, yes.
So we're going to have two public hearings next meeting?
Wow.
Do we want to do it?
Yeah, we need to get it done. Yeah, let's get it done.
It shouldn't take long.
Maybe do it first.
I think people will be in favor of that one.
Yeah.
If anything, they might say, they might have comments to make it more strict, but for now, at least, we're going to get it on the books.
Is there a chance that we can do that, public hearing before we open? Because this is old, right? That's a new public hearing. That'll be before we open this one. Yep, yep, okay.
That works.
That works, right?
Yep.
That works.
Yep.
Update. Actually, I got to be honest with you. Lori and I had a little chat the other day about informal discussions with applicants before they file an application. I know it's getting late, but I just want to mention this quickly to you. One of the things that has come up to me over the last week is, you know, how careful all of us really have to be with our kind of, Nick's looking at me like, you're right, yeah. And, and we are all human, and we all do step in it. And, come on, it's going to happen. Come on, we're all human. We're not perfect. We wouldn't be here, right? And one of the things I, I find, based on talking with a variety of different attorneys, too, it's a common technique that they use, and one of the things I'm concerned of is having informal discussions with applicants. So they're feeling us out before they file their application for a text change or something or other. And if we get an informal discussion with them, we could be saying things that then could be turned around, and we have to end up recusing ourselves. We had a good example of that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm kind of like, I'm not looking for, it's throwing us out on the table. I'm just think about it over the summer. I mean, is that something we want to have staff start doing more, and then let them present it to us, so we don't ever get caught in that bind? Or do we still want to continue having informal discussions with applicants before they file the application?
Are you talking about meetings?
Yes.
They come before us.
Yes. Again, we can't do anything about the--
I thought it was like the grocery store where they chase you around.
The good attorney who puts the application in, and then, you know, middle of it says, oh, you know, I'm thinking I'm going to pull it out now after they've already got, we have to process with. We can't do anything about that.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm just concerned, because I'm, you know, because I'm concerned about the body, all of us. And, and I'm just thinking, I don't look, and just food for thought for you guys. We don't even have to discuss it tonight.
Yep.
But I just am concerned about continuing to do more of those. A perfect example is all that discussion we had about the outside storage.
True.
Any one of us could have walked into that by saying the wrong thing.
We even did it with this application we had tonight, the Fleishens, before they, before they first came.
Yeah, a year ago. Right, exactly. So again, just food for thought, but you wanted to talk about this one in particular?
Actually, this is, it's, it's, it's just really, it's not necessarily an informal request. It's just a request. So they would like to, so if you recall, we, you approved the Trinity remon, the, the new building at Trinity, and you denied them because it doesn't, it's not permitted to have access, a second access on Hazard Avenue.
Yes.
Right? But they wanted to have that, but they said, okay, you know, we're going to do a text amendment. We're going to receive that text amendment application tonight. But what they would like to do is be able to use that as a construction entrance, rather than going down Middle Road and, and coming in from the back. Because that was their original intent anyway.
Right, that was their original thing.
And I, I mean, to me, it makes sense. It's a write-in only. They can't, you know--
But they have to get state approval for that, too, right? We, we just can't grant that.
Yeah.
They have, that's a curb cut.
But they need your approval first.
They need, they want to get our approval first.
I mean, if you need us, need them to come to you, we could do that. But I just felt it was, you know, it, it, it's, it's a temporary--
So we discussed, as we discussed with the body, Middle Road.
We got to go through the chair. Hold on. And Ginny had her hand first. No offense, Frank.
Is there a way we can make sure that they get rid of the entrance when they're finished with construction?
Yeah. I mean, that, I mean, that would be, if, if they're not allowed to have that second entrance--
Yep.
--based on whether or not this text amendment is approved, then they're going to have to close it.
Frank, Frank.
I remember we had some discussion around them using Middle Road for construction. I think they were, they kind of suggested it, didn't they, at first, or?
It's in--
Yeah.
It's in the zoning regs, that you can't use Middle Road as a, as a construction entrance.
No, I'm just putting that out there.
No, no, no.
We discussed--
Oh, there it is. It's in there. I found it by accident afterwards.
What regulation would stop us from saying, is there something uniquely different with that road that's in the regs?
Yes, the neighbors. The neighbors come out in force when there, when there's any, right?
More NIMBY, huh? Not my backyard?
Oh, yes.
No, I just wanted to raise that. We discussed that option with them.
And at the time, I hadn't seen it, but I found it by accident. I never said anything to anybody.
So, so does--
So we got, so, you know, so that's not preferred, so we need to give them--
Yeah.
--this other one.
Well, I guess my--
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
But I guess my--
Just trying to figure this out.
I'm not disagreeing with Ginny. I'm just saying, so Lori can hear me.
Yeah.
So apparently, we have a regulation where years ago, the commission wrote that you can't use Middle Road for construction vehicles.
Yep.
You found it, Chris.
Thank you. See?
Where, where is it? Is it specifically listed?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, specifically under special requirements pertaining to the BP district, subtitle--
That's right, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's right. It says, it's only permitted for emergency access.
Correct. That's, that's how St. Francis got their back entrance, but you noticed the chain on it.
Well, well, well. I thought you, I thought you might have remembered it, Nick.
I was impressed.
So obviously, those have to go to the state--
No, no, so, yeah, so I'll just--
So we're kind of stuck, it sounds like. They're kind of stuck at this point.
So I think we, look at this favorably. We can get them to not use it if they can't use it later. I mean, we can't, we want to make sure they can get in there safely.
It would only be used temp, as a temporary emerg, construction entrance--
Construction entrance.
--instead of going through the light and, and going through the main campus with all of their trucks.
And then before they got their CO, they would just put it back to the way it was.
Right, unless they get approval for it in the meantime, because they're coming in to, for a text amendment to allow that area to be used for--
They're going to come in front of us eventually, anyway. They want to make a permanent, they want to make a, eventually make a permit for their deliveries.
Right. Yep, that's what we had discussed, yep.
But why change--
Yeah.
Is there a way we can give it to them without changing the zoning regulations?
The problem is, is Lori says, well, it'll be a right turn only. Can we make it a very--
No.
Because you're saying they don't want to stop at the light and then turn in. Well, if it's a right turn, they're having a second entrance, they'd have to stop at the light, then go and turn in to make a right turn only.
Right, but the point is, is they don't want to, they don't want to turn into the campus at the light, because then they're in the middle of the campus. This will be at the very edge of the campus, where the construction is occurring.
And then we set a precedent.
I think we figure out a way to get them to modify it.
But then again, right.
Yep.
We set a precedent.
I don't want to change--
They're asking for a construction entrance, which is often--
I don't want to change the language for one person.
--temporary.
Right.
Or should we, or should we go back to the regulation and get rid of that Middle Road caveat?
No.
I don't think--
No.
They are, they are coming in with a text amendment to see if they could get, if they could get that approved, then they will come back and modify their site plan to get--
That second entrance.
To get the second entrance, which everybody was in favor, including the, the emergency services. So.
You set a precedent for everybody who walks through--
This is not for a second curb cut. This is for a construction entrance.
It still sets a precedent.
Yep.
Ow. You've got to have a construction entrance someplace--
Right.
--for every application. There's always a construction entrance.
Yeah, so here's my question to you, if I might clear my mind. If we were to, if we were to vote tonight to temporarily allow them to have that construction entrance--
Mm-hmm.
--that must be removed at CO time, or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
That's no guarantee and no indication that we even have an inclination to change our regulations--
Of course.
--to have them have a second curb.
Of course.
Because, you know, I'm trying to think here, because they are kind of in a jam.
They are.
They need a construction, and they can't come through that main campus. Believe me, I used to have to go there quite frequently. And we can't, we, we thought they could use Middle Road. Remember, we granted them the okay to do that with the Middle Road, and now we find out they can't use Middle Road. So they, they have a legitimate problem--
Yes.
--that our regulation, because of the Middle Road, is stopping them from being able to have a safe and secure construction area and still be able to do business.
And that's the thing, safety, you know.
It is safety. Even I understand where you're coming from. I don't want to--
Can we vote on it?
Can we vote on it?
Yeah.
So, as chairman, I'm going to propose the motion, as chairman, I hate to do that, but since I--
Vote for it.
--is that we've allow, we vote to allow Trinity Health and their construction company to have a temporary right-hand entrance into their construction site that will have to be disassembled and vacated when the CO is issued. In addition, this is no indication that we will accept or have any desire to change our regulations to make that a permanent entrance.
So moved.
Does that sound right to everybody?
Yep.
Fine, yep.
Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner LaFicus. Secretary roll call. Hate to do that to you. I think, I think that's, Lori, does that sound like we're covered?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Lou Fiore.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Lynda DeGray, against. Frank Alamo.
Four.
Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
Nick LaFicus.
Four.
The records show that was six, four, one, one against, and I certainly want to add my own comment at the end of that, as that, only because there really wasn't any alternative for this particular construction. What are we going to do? We are, we kind of handcuffed them ourselves in our own regulation.
What are we going to do? We're going to approve their applications, and they know you can't get in there.
Yeah.
Let's just remember when they come back, if you want to make it--
Well, that's a different horse of different color. A horse of different color.
A whole different separate application, or whatever.
I mean--
All right, any-- Yeah. You could tell them that an impression is, might not be that favorable. Possibly. We don't know.
They still have to go to the state for this, anyway.
Yeah, they do for this. Yeah, they still have to go to the state for this.
And by the time they get approval, the building will be--
Yeah.
Exactly.
All right, let's see what the state says.
Any correspondence? Any commissioner's correspondence? Any director of planning report?
No.
I really don't have much. I've been on vacation pretty much the last week.
Anything, anything you want to mention about any new applications quickly?
Yep, that, that I will do. Receipt of applications, XCA 3041 was our text amendment that we, that's our application for the warehouse, the minimum warehouse sizes. Public hearing 3034, text amendment also for an access drive. This is the Hazard Avenue and the BP zone--
Oh, so they want, they actually want to come in front of us next meeting?
Yeah.
So they should withdraw it?
No, they want to make a per, they want, they still want to come in front of us for a permanent.
They're trying to do text amendments to make it permanent.
Oh, no.
So they want, they want, they-
They want them to get a permanent second driveway.
Right.
Who?
Trinity Health.
The guy who just said okay.
Right, we said okay for temporary, but they still want to make it permanent.
They want it permanent, which everybody seemed to be in favor of at the, during the-
So, you know, they have the, they have the right to request a text.
They do have the right.
So.
Yes, they do.
Any chance they're willing to come to the following July meeting on that one, Lori?
Um.
It's, they're going to, they're going to be, they're going to be at the end.
We're not handcuffing them now. They can get started, anyway.
Yeah.
Well, we, our action we took tonight gives them the right to get started, so, you know.
It's already a traffic mess.
I, we'll, we'll just have to see.
Yeah, if you don't mind, somebody can just give a call and see, because we're, you know, we're, you know.
We took the step to, you know.
We're giving the step to get them going, and we're pretty busy next meeting, and-
Yep.
I mean, they don't need to finalize this for actually, what, another year?
Yeah.
Until they've finished construction?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, see if they, if they're willing to work with us on that. September would even be preferable.
Yep, and then, um-
Not, no special meetings, Mr. Chair.
Oh, none.
And then, public hearing 3043, 78 Park Avenue, which is a new duplex.
Okay. That's already-
One where the house-
It's already going up, isn't it?
Lori, why?
There's already one being built.
Isn't that the-
73? No, that, I think that was 44 where it burned. 73 was-
So that, that's not a zone for multi-
78.
That's not a zone for multi already? Would have to come in front of us for that, huh?
There's no zone for multi.
There's no zone for multi, you're right.
Is it for Devon?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's across the street.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. All right, any, no opportunities or unresolved issues?
I move to adjourn.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner DeGray to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, the meeting is over at 11:05.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Alex.